Good morning. I am Councilmember Chi Ose, Chair on the Committee on Cultural Affairs.
At this time, please place electronic devices on silent or vibrate mode. If you want to submit testimony, come to the Sergeant at Arms desk and fill out one of these witness slips. On the Zoom, if you want to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, Chair. You may begin.
Thank you so much. Part two. Good morning. I am Councilmember Chi Ose, Chair on the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations. Welcome to today's Oversight Hearing on Create NYC, the New York City Comprehensive Cultural Plan. At this hearing, the committee will also be hearing Introduction Number 590, co-sponsored by Carolina Rivera and myself, and referred to as Open Culture 2.0, but which will require the city to reestablish the Open Cultural Program, allowing the city to issue a permit to eligible art and cultural institutions to use outdoor space for cultural performances. As Chair of the Committee, I acknowledge how important this program was to our cultural community, providing artists and organizations with space to share their work with the greater community during a time when we needed the arts the most. I look forward to hearing from the cultural community later on in this hearing on their thoughts about this bill. Let me start by talking for a moment about Create NYC. As I am sure everyone here knows, the Comprehensive Cultural Plan was developed after extensive and impressive public outreach involving over almost 200,000 New Yorkers, who gave us their views, insight, and feedback in all kinds of forms, about the most important art and cultural priorities for the city's next 10 years. The 28 objectives and 96 recommendations that were part of Create NYC when the plan was launched in July 2017 were streamlined by the Department of Cultural Affairs, DCLA, into five objectives: 25 matching strategies and 40 specific actions within those strategies in the 2019 Action Plan. That Action Plan also represented the first two-year progress report required by Local Law 46. Since then, DCLA has submitted a second two-year progress report, data for which was made available by DCLA in 2021. We know where we are with regard to receiving these reports. However, there are a few things I aim to accomplish today. First, understanding what progress we've achieved with Create NYC, what's happened, and where we are. Second, I would like to learn more about DCLA's transparency with the larger cultural community on their progress in meeting Create NYC goals. Third, I would like to learn about the Citizen Advisory Committee, or CAC, the process that DCLA undertook in supporting the implementation of the plan, including how this relates to promoting equity and expanding accessibility in New York City. Lastly, I would like to discuss the future of Create NYC and what we are doing from now until 2027, including with regard to budget. I also want to be clear that I am particularly concerned about outreach to my office regarding two priorities identified in the original Create NYC plan are not sufficiently addressed in the Action Plan, or in the subsequent actions being undertaken by DCLA and its partner city agencies. One priority is expanding diversity and inclusion in the cultural workforce, especially when it comes to financial and other support for our smaller arts and cultural organizations based in serving or celebrating communities of color. The other priority is cultural access for people with disabilities and disability arts, a critical part of the fabric of our city. How effective have the city's efforts been in focusing on these two priorities, and how much progress has been made, and what remains to be done? I also look forward to hearing the testimony of the administration, as well as of the members of the arts and cultural community who have come today to talk about the Open Culture Bill and what that would bring to the people of New York. Before I move on, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations who are present here this morning. Thank you for joining us, Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Dinowitz. And I would also like to thank my staff and the committee staff for their work in preparing today's hearing. Naomi Hopkins, my Chief of Staff; May Vuchirpong-Batana, my Policy and Budget Director; Brendan McKinney, of course, the Committee's Senior Legislative Counsel; and Regina Paul, the Committee's Legislative Policy Analyst; and Sandra Gray, the Committee's Financial Analyst. And finally, I would like to address some housekeeping items before we begin with administration's testimony. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the entrance of this room. Please fill out the slip, even if you have already registered in advance, that you will be testifying in person today. To allow as many people as possible to testify, testimony will be limited to two minutes per person, whether you are testifying in person or on Zoom. I am also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those who are assigned into the Zoom webinar. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. Now, I will turn to our senior committee counsel, who will administer the affirmation to the witness from the mayoral administration, who may then begin testimony. Brenda?
Thank you so much, Chair. Just for the record, I will read the names and then ask you to raise your right hand for the oath. So today, providing testimony is DCLA Commissioner Lori Combo. And on hand for Q and A, we have Shirley Levy, Senior Advisor for DCLA; Lance Pallavi, DCLA General Counsel; and Don Tolson, CCM Executive Director, potentially also testifying. If you can please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions today? Thank you. Okay. And with that, administration, you may begin your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am so excited to be here this morning. My name is Lori Combo. I am the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Cultural Affairs, and so happy to see so many of my council colleagues here today. I was excited to see Councilmember Dinowitz in the Bronx at Wave Hill. I was recently joined by Councilmembers Ose and Lewis at the "I Will Graduate" Performing Arts venue, and was proud to see Councilmember Hanif at Port Authority welcoming our asylum seekers with Little Amal. So we have been doing quite a bit of work together collaboratively, and I look forward to the future. Today, we are going to testify regarding today's topic: Oversight of the Create NYC Cultural Plan. I am joined today by a number of colleagues from DCLA and other partner city agencies, and I really want to thank all those that are coming here to testify, whether online or in person. Your input continues to be invaluable in strengthening New York City's cultural sector. I understand that this is the first city council hearing to assess the reach and impact of the Create NYC Cultural Plan since it was adopted more than five years ago. Thank you for the opportunity both to offer testimony on behalf of the Department of Cultural Affairs, the lead city agency that drove the creation of the Cultural Plan, and to hear from the public and constituents about the plan. Create NYC was rooted in public feedback and engagement from the start, so a continued dialogue around its effectiveness and how we can together better serve its goals is critical. I'll begin testimony with a bit of background and history on Create NYC. Law 46 of 2015, which as a council member I co-sponsored, along with Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer and Councilmember Steve Levin, required the New York City Department of Cultural Affairs to submit New York City's first-ever comprehensive cultural plan by July 2017, just over two years from the date the bill was signed. The bill laid out the framework for creating the plan, mandating a robust community outreach process, and boy was it, establishing the Citizens Advisory Committee to advise on the plan, and spelling out a few specific issues the plan had to investigate, such as affordability, arts education, the distribution of arts resources throughout the city, and more. In October 2016, DCLA officially kicked off the public engagement process. For the next six months, working with partners across the cultural sector, the agency led an all-hands-on-deck effort to solicit New York's feedback on issues large and small in order to shape a collective vision for what our city's cultural community could and should be. It was such an exciting process with so many partners all across the city. This feedback came in many forms. The agency hosted major public workshops in each of the five boroughs, as well as over 50 targeted focus groups that investigated what specific groups wanted to see in the plan: NHTA residents, LGBTQI, veteran and immigrant communities, to name just a few. Across all live and virtual spaces, more than 188,000 points of engagement occurred. As someone who participated in several of these feedback sessions and engagement events, I appreciated that this did not feel like a typical top-down input process, where you simply submit your carefully considered feedback on a card, never to be seen again. These events felt lively and real, a testament to what can happen when power is truly shared with members of the community in shaping an agenda and a strategy. A number of groups and coalitions submitted formal proposals and research, including the NYC Artist Coalition, Dance NYC, the Disability Arts New York Task Force, and the Cultural Equity Group. Over 40 events led by community partners provided input as well, including a diverse set of cultural coalitions from Staten Island to Jamaica, to East New York to the Lower East Side, thanks to funding from the New York City Cultural Agenda Fund in the New York Community Trust. This was cultural democracy in action and showed the power of public and private partnerships. DCLA also commissioned a survey from the Siena College Research Institute, helping to ensure that the plan was broadly aligned with public opinion. Among other things, the survey found that an astonishing 97% of residents believe that arts and culture are important to the overall quality of life in New York City. It's hard to get people to agree on much in New York City, but the fact that so many people agree that art and culture is critical to our everyday life stresses and also is noteworthy and inspiring. Whatever our different priorities may have been, we could all work from this shared understanding that arts and culture are a critical part of our everyday lives. Create NYC was released in July 2017. Across nearly 200 pages, it laid out 92 recommendations covering the nine-issue areas required by the bill. It pointed to both strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities, with short, medium, and long-term goals. It was at times big and bold, and at other times wonky, but by and large, the constituencies who showed up to engage in the planning process saw themselves reflected in its far-reaching recommendations and embraced it as a visionary roadmap. But as we know, a plan is only as good as the action to back it up. Create NYC built in part on recent work and research conducted by the agency itself. For instance, DCLA's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Study, released in 2016, led to new efforts to foster greater diversity in the city's cultural workforce, such as the CUNY Cultural Corps, our pipeline program that's still going strong. Create NYC provided another opportunity to harness this energy and consensus behind the need for greater equity and inclusion. And so the new requirement for the 33 members of the cultural institutions group to formally adopt DEI plans, among the first such plans in the cultural sector in the nation, which we are particularly proud of, was announced along with the Cultural Plan in 2017. We continue to work with the CIG to track progress on these far-reaching plans. To pick just one example, the Public Theater set specific benchmarks for increasing the proportion of staff members of color, as well as ambitious pay equity goals. Across the SIG membership, the plans helped spur similar efforts to codify and accelerate work that in many cases had already begun. In early 2017, Social Impact of the Arts Project issued a report showing how the presence of cultural assets correlates with stronger, healthier communities. This, too, was a major influence on the plan and its outcomes. These are just a couple ways in which the Cultural Plan helped to focus and drive forward work that was already being done by the agency and throughout the sector. Create NYC didn't invent equity. Advocates and activists have been calling for more cultural equity in this city for decades. In earlier generations, these bold visionaries created institutions like the Studio Museum in Harlem and El Museo del Barrio. In the years before the Cultural Plan was released, I was lucky to work alongside modern-day visionaries like Bill Aguado, Dr. Martha Moreno Vega, Bob Lee, Diane Frere, and Bolsa Rivers, just to name a few, with whom I co-founded the Cultural Equity Group when I was the leader of the Museum of Contemporary African Diaspora and Art, Mokata. But what Create NYC did was fully embrace these calls into the mainstream. Suddenly, those of us calling for equity could see our message reflected in a plan adopted at the highest levels of city government, an invigorating affirmation of our collective work. It's important to see the plans placed on this continuum of so much work that came before and after, and to understand how Create NYC served as a major milestone on our path toward creating a more vibrant, equitable cultural sector for all New Yorkers. At the same time, Create NYC fostered several entirely new funding programs that took direct aim at its major findings. The Mayor's Grant for Cultural Impact, responding to the plan's call for more coordination between city agencies and the cultural sector. This program supported a range of exciting new partnerships. To name just one, Clermont Illuminated, was a partnership between the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice and Bronx Documentary Center that created a festival around site-specific, light-based artworks. The artwork by local youth was projected onto exterior walls, literally lighting up a formerly dark and derelict step in the South Bronx with the creative energy of community members. The Create NYC Disability Forward Fund, launched in 2018, the DFF supported new and ongoing efforts to engage people with disabilities as artists, cultural workers, and audience members. From residencies for disabled dance artists to career development opportunities for cultural workers with disabilities, to plays performed in ASL, the Disability Forward Fund represented a major push toward the goal of greater cultural equity for the disability community, which is a through line for Create NYC. The Create NYC Language Access Fund was established to support cultural organizations' efforts to increase access for audiences whose primary language is not English. In its first round of grants, the Language Access Fund awarded 36 nonprofit support-for-program, representing 12 languages, including Spanish, Chinese, Korean, Russian, and American Sign Language. Both DFF and Language Access Fund are still provided to organizations working in these areas through DCLA's Cultural Development Fund, which we are all particularly proud of. The Create NYC Leadership Accelerator was a professional development program designed to promote diversity and equity in the cultural workforce through a curriculum developed by CUNY School of Professional Studies and Creative Arts Team. The program helped mid-level cultural workers strengthen the management skills that are integral to career growth and mobility, and to build a diverse network of peers who could rely on each other for mutual support. Participants examined systemic challenges that exist in the workplace and exchanged ideas for promoting equity in the cultural workforce. In some ways, the Leadership Accelerator worked parallel to the CUNY Cultural Corps, which DCLA helped establish in 2016. Following the release of a major demographic survey of the city's cultural workforce, the Cultural Corps was designed to address what some consider the pipeline problem: by providing CUNY's diverse student body with paid opportunities to get work experience at cultural institutions. To date, over 500 students have been placed in paid positions with over 60 cultural not-for-profits. But DCLA's demographic surveys also showed that mid-career cultural workers faced a hump as cultural leadership remained overwhelmingly white and organizations got more diverse as you went down the organizational ladder. A 2019 follow-up to DCLA's demographic survey found that cultural boards and executive leadership were 70% and 68% white, non-Hispanic, respectively. This in a city where 2/3 of residents identify as people of color. So while the Cultural Corps got more diverse talent into entry-level opportunities, the Leadership Accelerator was intended to help diverse mid-career cultural workers advance into leadership positions. This also highlights the complex nature of defining what programs grew explicitly from Create NYC. The plan both launched new efforts, as well as recommended expanding or reforming existing programs. It's important to emphasize that Create NYC was not just a plan for DCLA. The agency may have spearheaded it, but its goals and strategies reached beyond cultural affairs. In fact, the indicators and metrics in the plan often explicitly point to actions required by a range of partner agencies and organizations to move the needle. The call to create an Office of Nightlife, for instance, was embraced by the plan. This office, a critical link between local government and our nightlife and DIY arts community, is now part of the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, MoM. The Department of Education is obviously a key partner in seeing through the plan's ambitious arts education recommendations. Housing, affordability, and economic development, all are substantially represented in the plan, which all speaks to how tightly woven culture is throughout the fabric of our city. It's impossible to talk about it as an isolated thing. It's part of who we are as New Yorkers and becoming more of an artful city. I want to point out how important a partner the city council has historically been for promoting cultural equity, too, because this is certainly a partnership. In my time as a council member, we expanded the Coalition of Theaters of Color Initiative from just 700,000 for eight theaters to over 3.7 million for more than 50 theaters encompassing a wide range of communities of color, like Thalia Spanish Theater, Chinese Theater Works, and Amaranda. This was really personally one of the things I'm most excited about as a council member. Council's funding of CASA and Sup CASA provided wide access to cultural after-school programming and arts programming for older New Yorkers. When I entered the council, each council member only received five CASAs, but now we are up to over 17 per each council member. We created the Utility Relief Program to cover energy costs for a diverse group of institutions on city-owned property, and I was particularly proud to spearhead that effort, along with adding Weeksville Heritage Center to the CIG list to save it from the brink of closure, the first new CIG in over 20 years. All of these achievements align with the values and goals of Create NYC, and none of them could have happened without a close partnership with the city council. The private sector also has a major role to play. In fact, culture is one of the great public-private partnerships that has shaped our city. Starting in the 19th century, the city's leaders saw an important relationship between the public realm and the arts. The Met Museum and Natural History Museum were established on city property, with a mandate to serve all residents. Like with Create NYC, that was just a starting place. We've since expanded the city partnership with culture that started with those two groups to encompass communities in every corner of New York, thanks to decades of work by people advocating both inside and outside of local government. As we consider paths laid out to the Cultural Plan today, it's important to recall these earlier strategies for making our cultural community stronger and more representative of the city's incredible diversity. For the first biennial update of Create NYC as required by the legislation, DCLA streamlined and simplified its sprawling 92 recommendations into the Create NYC Action Plan. This tied nearly every recommendation from the original plan into five broad objectives, with 25 supporting strategies and a range of indicators to track each one. If you visit nyc.gov/createNYC, you'll find this all provided in an easily searchable format. Each of the 25 strategies includes a list of references. If you click on each reference, it links you back to the relevant recommendation from the original plan. Each strategy in turn includes a list of associated actions, which you can filter by year. So DCLA has taken many efforts to ensure that the public can track the progress on the plan and see exactly how the streamlined Action Plan relates back to the original plan. Several months after the Action Plan was released, COVID hit our city and changed everything. But far from sweeping the plan aside, as some might expect, the damage that the pandemic wrought on our communities actually validated much of what was in Create NYC. We saw underserved communities disproportionately impacted by COVID, not for any medical reasons, but due to long-term underinvestment driven by systemic racism. These are the very economic and racial disparities the plan took direct aim at. And because the Cultural Plan had helped foster a broad understanding of culture's value, both economically and socially, investing relief funding in our arts community became a top priority for New York City policymakers. Programs like the City Artist Corps were created with federal COVID relief funding as a result, and culture was front and center in Mayor Adams' Economic Recovery Blueprint released earlier this year. Even DCLA's record-setting expense budget in the current fiscal year attests to the recognition by this administration and our partners throughout city government, including the council, that art and culture are essential for our city's recovery in so many ways. The legacy of Create NYC can be seen in this broad consensus. The agency and our partners continue to build on the platform provided by the Cultural Plan. Through the Cultural Development Fund, we're instituting new equity measures to ensure this funding gets to groups far and wide. The CIG continues to implement changes based on the DEI plans required, with regular progress reports. We're ensuring that our capital funding portfolio also reflects our city's great diversity. In this year's capital budget, we directed new investments to building cultural infrastructure that reflects our city's diversity. New homes for the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance and the Universal Hip-Hop Museum, renovations at the Leslie Lomax Museum and Noguchi Museum, show how the values of the Cultural Plan can infuse all of our work. With just over half of the plan's intended 10-year window behind us, there's still so much more to do. We look forward to working with you, our partners in city council, our cultural community, and all New Yorkers to continue working toward its broad, ambitious vision. Regarding the proposed legislation, Intro 590 of 2022, which would renew the Open Cultural Program, was an appropriate bill to be included in an Oversight Hearing for the Cultural Plan: bringing culture to our open spaces, coordination among city agencies in support of the arts, and expanding opportunities for artists to work in NYC. These are all echoed in the Cultural Plan and were accompanied by the innovative Open Culture Program during some of the most trying times of the pandemic. I co-sponsored the legislation that created the original program. My colleagues and I in the administration look forward to working with you to continue to meet the needs of our cultural community as the city continues its recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic and expands opportunities for all New Yorkers to experience arts right in their neighborhoods. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I am absolutely thrilled that this council is excited, interested, and focused on realizing the full potential of New York City's Cultural Plan, and I'm so excited that you all have brought this legislation forward as well. Thank you so much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that this committee may have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And I also do want to recognize some more of my colleagues that are on this committee that have joined us today. Thank you for coming, Councilmember Ung, Councilmembers Joseph, Councilmember Hanif, and Councilmember Hudson. And we also do have Councilmember Moya on Zoom. Just a reminder to council members that are on Zoom, if you have any questions, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. And also, just a reminder to everyone that came to testify in person, even if you did register online prior, please do fill out a slip right here at the Sergeant at Arms table. And thank you so much for being here this morning. Now, we'll move on to some questions after that testimony from the administration. And the first one that I want to start off with, Commissioner, is, you know, as Commissioner, and you've been a Commissioner for about 10 months now, what is your perspective of Create NYC in the state that it's in at this very moment?
I think that, while I stated in my testimony that COVID-19 obviously stopped some of the progress that we wanted to make, but it also highlighted the importance of the progress and the work that needs to be done. I believe that currently, right now, the Cultural Plan is in an exciting, ever-revolving space. I feel that COVID illuminated the need for the Cultural Plan more than ever, but I also feel in this new administration, Mayor Eric Adams was very adamant about realizing the goals of the Cultural Plan. And by doing that, he wanted to make sure that we passed the largest cultural budget in New York City's history, and we were able to do that in partnership with each of you. And I just want to quote the numbers here in terms of looking at our budget. We had $237 million in expense, as well as $220 million in capital. This represents the largest budget in our city's history as it pertains to culture. It also allowed us the opportunity to continue incredible programs that came about as a result of the Cultural Plan, such as the Disability Fund, as well as the Language Access Fund, and these were critical as a result of this level of funding and input. But also, implementation of the Office of Nightlife, which I spoke about in my testimony, this was a huge opportunity. And we also were able to, it's about the funding, but it's also about how we restructure the funding, how we get funding into the outer boroughs. And through this CDF process, we were able to, through our grant-making application process, to change the entire landscape of how we fund organizations. We are now going to have smaller and mid-sized organizations receiving more funding than ever before. We're going to make sure that there's more funding in the outer boroughs. And as far as capital, as I spoke about, you are going to see in the next few years some really exciting projects in terms of, the Studio Museum's new building will be coming online. The Hip-Hop Museum in the Bronx will- The Hip-Hop Museum in the Bronx will also be opening quite soon, along with the first ever building for the Bronx Children's Museum, which is coming up this month. You're going to see the Louis Armstrong House open in Queens. These are opportunities for many organizations to either expand or to have their first permanent home, like the Afro-Jazz Alliance, the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. These are many organizations that systemically were not part of the capital process but are now going to have world-class, state-of-the-art institutions. So the cultural plan is alive and well, it's evolving, but I want to stress in this hearing, the cultural plan will really only be as successful as our joint partnership. So some of the initiatives that I mentioned in terms of either its creation or expansion also complemented the goals of the cultural plan as well.
And would you say that the cultural plan, as it is, is efficient?
Is the cultural plan efficient in terms of managing the expectations of the cultural sector of New York City?
Yes.
Well, there are over 92 recommendations.
Right.
And if we went out into the cultural sector, we probably could come away with about 1,000 more. So there are so many more goals that people want to see reflected in the city of New York, but the cultural plan, again, is an ever-evolving document. It's always going to change. Diversity is not a place that you land at. It's ever-evolving, and it's something that we always have to remain committed to. We always have to be doing the work. We always have to figure out new ways of reaching audiences that are underserved. We always have to figure out how we can utilize more public and private partnerships to reach those organizations and communities that have been underserved. So this is really an ever-evolving process that we all can do collaboratively and together. Again, the partnership between the council and the administration has proven over the last decade or so to be the most effective way to push the needle in terms of the progress that we want to see in this cultural sphere. But can we be doing more? Can we utilize more resources? Can we have more partnerships to get us there? Absolutely, all the time, and I really look forward to working with everyone to figure out how we can bring greater diversity, equity, inclusion throughout our cultural sector, throughout the entire city. Because we are really, we are really the global leader on so many levels in terms of the work that we do. The Language Access Grant, the ability to have a disability funding stream, these are revolutionary in New York City. The SUK CASA Senior Program, these are programs that have set the stage for so many agencies across New York City, but also in the world in terms of the work that we're doing here.
And is the agency working off of the 2017 CREATE NYC Plan or the streamlined 2019 Action Plan?
The 2019 streamlined plan is really based off of the 2017 goals and recommendations. So we've streamlined them, but while we've streamlined them, it doesn't mean that we've eliminated them. We've more so categorized them so that we can better track, and we can better view, and we can better see, but also so that we can be more purposeful in its implementation. So there's not an elimination, there's more just a consolidation and a grouping so that we can more effectively see the recommendations.
So then you would say that the agency is keeping the strategies from the 2017 Plan that have not been achieved as well within the more streamlined combination of both of them?
Certainly. I mean, this is, the plan was created really as a 10-year plan. This was something that we had a 10-year timeline in order to implement. Of course, things have changed and shifted during the pandemic, but the goal was always for this to be a 10-year timeline in terms of not necessarily achieving but also reviewing and also altering because the diversity of New York City continues to change, the needs of New York City continues to change, how we look at ourselves and how we look at the world continues to change. So we want to be ever amorphous with it, we want to continue to evolve with it, we want to make sure that we are keeping pace with the cultural diversity and movements of the city. So 2017 is really only an indicator of what the original foundation of the plan was, but in 2019, it's more streamlined so that people can follow more closely, and we can also deliver on those deliverables.
And can you maybe go more in depth in describing the process by which the agency created the 2019 Action Plan? Like, how were the 14 indicators chosen, or how did you decide which of the 96 strategies from CREATE NYC would be referenced in the action plan?
Well, I'm actually going to turn that over to Shirley Levy, who was actually
Right, right.
in the Department of Cultural Affairs at that time. I've been here now for about eight months, but I wanted to turn it over to Shirley, who could more adequately answer that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Council. It was a relatively simple process internally. As the Commissioner said, we didn't eliminate any of the recommendations, but when it was time to develop a report for council, we realized that there were a lot of redundancies in the language, there were redundancies in some of the recommendations, and in order to report more effectively, not just to the council body but to the sector at large, it just made more sense to consolidate them and organize them into sections. So if you look carefully at the action plan, you'll see that, you know, that we do cross-reference them, so anyone who's concerned about a recommendation from 2017 as being eliminated can actually see the thread of how it arrived at 2019. So it was just a matter of reorganization and streamlining, but nothing was eliminated.
And you said that it was more of an internal process. And with that, was the CAC or the Citizens Advisory Committee, the committee responsible for providing feedback and recommendations on the 2017 CREATE NYC Plan consulted during the formation of the 2019 Action Plan?
Absolutely, yes. And I believe they endorsed the action plan, they provided a letter of support, they've been with us the entire time.
Wonderful, thank you. Another question that I have is, which of the objectives and strategies do you think DCLA and its partners have been most successful in accomplishing, and why?
Oh, I could go on all day. There are so many things that I'm particularly proud of. I am particularly proud of the Office of Nightlife, and the creation of the Office of Nightlife was so critical because what we saw during the pandemic was that so many of our nightlife industries that were not as protected prior to now had an advocate and now had an office to be able to go to in order to understand how to get federal support, how to manage lease negotiations with landlords who wanted to kick them out, how to make sure that they were protected during this time. So the Office of Nightlife was extremely critical in its creation during this pandemic. I'm extremely proud of the capital budget in particular because the capital budget is going to reach so many communities, particularly in the outer boroughs. The Bronx was one of the boroughs in this budget cycle that really benefited from the capital process in a very instrumental and major way, and we wanted to make sure that Councilmember Dinowitz was happy that the Bronx is getting some capital love and making sure that they are going to have world-class institutions. I'm so looking forward to this month, going to the ribbon-cutting for the Bronx Children's Museum. That's a huge infrastructure change that's going to change the way people visit, see, and navigate their experience through the Bronx. We want to make sure that those underserved communities that have been plagued with issues of gun violence and all of these issues are able to turn the page in terms of making sure that children are growing up in communities where they feel loved and they feel supported. I was very happy to be with you, Councilmember Olsey, at the Brooklyn Children's Museum, where we just opened the new theater, world-class, state-of-the-art theater. You skipped out on the Minions' Marathon movie, but it was an incredible opportunity to be able to see that our children are going to be able to go to world-class institutions right in their own neighborhood in Crown Heights and Bedford-Stuyvesant. I mean, this was essentially unheard of when I was growing up, that we would have these world-class institutions in our own communities. The CDF process, I just want to read you some really exciting information about the CDF process and how we've changed the infrastructure of it in a major way. So on this, we now have, which I'm particularly proud of, we were able to double the minimum grant award from $5,000 to $10,000. So many of you, we all know the level of paperwork that these grants require, but we wanted to make sure that organizations that were applying for funding, we're not going to just walk away with $5,000. We set the stage so that the new floor is $10,000. So any organization applying to the Department of Cultural Affairs is now going to receive a $10,000 grant should they qualify and meet the guidelines of our panel review process. We also increased the ability to have more panelists from all throughout the diversity of the New York City. Panelists were paid $480 for two days of work to review panels. So in the upcoming review and panel process, we want you as council members to recommend people from your community, this is so critical, that you recommend people from your community that should be a part of this panel review process. We also, over 10 weeks this summer, our staff and 260 panelists reviewed 1,250 applications in 52 panels. This was an amazing accomplishment. But I also want to add that we focus very much on small to mid-sized organizations in this panel review process. We wanted to make sure that we got funding to the outer boroughs but also to communities that systemically did not receive funding in the past. I'm also super proud about, I mean, because you've asked, I'm also super proud, and then I'll end here because I could go on and on, the Language Access Grant is huge. That's an incredible component to this, to be able to intentionally send a message to the field that we want to see more language accessibility in our cultural institutions, and that's what that streamline of funding will do. It will send a message to cultural institutions that there is funding available for you to provide language access throughout your institution, as well as the disability, the Disability Fund. This is critical also to send a message to the sector that we want our institutions throughout New York City to be fully accessible for all New Yorkers and visitors to New York City. And finally, I'll just add with the CUNY Cultural Corps, this is so important, and it's a program that I certainly want to see expanded. We have to create the pipeline, which this program does, in order to make sure that we're not just talking about diversity, but we are actually creating the pipeline to create the diversity. So we have to have individuals that are coming out of our educational institutions with internship opportunities, with the ability to learn, with hands-on mentors, but also the ability to be able to work in those institutions. We'll create a pipeline so that we can have more diverse staff, that we can have those diverse board members, we can have the ability to have our programs and exhibitions more reflective of the city of New York. When we educate our workforce about the critical components of cultural work and the ability to have a sustainable internship provides that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I think you did reference the Language Access Fund, correct? I think the Language Access Fund you referenced in testimony stopped in 2019, and I wanted to ask, are there plans to reestablish the Language Access Fund, or is this part of the CDF? What is the status of that fund and the CREATE NYC Disability Forward Fund?
It is actually a part of the CDF Fund.
Okay.
So organizations have an opportunity, when they apply for their grant, to be able to select and to provide a description of the work that they're doing in their application. And I also wanted to add that as well, that our applications are all online now, which was something that was not done before. So the Language Access is a part of the CDF process as well as the Disability Fund.
And I also, we touched on COVID and its impact on the cultural community as well as CREATE NYC, and as we all know, COVID severely impacted the cultural community and additional programs and initiatives were created to address the issues artists and organizations faced during the pandemic. Does DCLA see these COVID-era programs and initiatives as part of the CREATE NYC Plan, or are they separate initiatives that will be incorporated in a revision of the CREATE NYC Plan?
Can you read the, can you reread this question section of the question?
Yes. Does DCLA see these COVID-era programs and initiatives as part of the CREATE NYC Plan, or are they separate initiatives that will be incorporated in a revision of the CREATE NYC Plan?
So the way we really look at the CREATE NYC Plan is, the CREATE NYC Plan is not a siloed plan or program within the agency. We are fully committed in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, which the cultural plan is based upon in every single thing that we do, in everything that we do. So it's not as if we look at certain aspects or certain programs as part of the CREATE NYC program and others are not. They're all a part of this dynamic where we want to see cultural diversity in every aspect of everything that we do. So Language Access, the Disability Fund, putting more dollars into our capital fund, expanding the cultural institution groups to include Weeksville. These are all interwoven together, and the programs that also the City Council does is a huge part of that. When you vote for programs such as the Theaters of Color and the expansion of SUK CASA and the expansion of the CASA program, those we consider are all a part of the cultural plan and CREATE NYC. Your ability to recommend panelists to be a part of the CDF process, all of that is interwoven, and we certainly don't consider them to be siloed.
Thank you. And which of the objectives and strategies, I know we talked a lot about many of the different things that you guys have been doing that have been wonderful, you know, but what strategies and objectives do you think DCLA and its partners have been least successful in accomplishing?
Least successful?
Yes.
Not accustomed to answering those kinds of questions. I would say the area that I strive to do more of, that I would like to see more of, I would like to see more public-private partnerships. I feel that the area where we could use more improvement, or the area in which we could be more successful, or to really like, you know, fully loaded, you know, everything's moving on all full cylinders would be to see if we could have, we could tap more into the industries that are successful here in New York City and to create more of those partnerships because government can only take us but so far. We need to have more partnerships with our corporate sectors, with our foundations, to be able to move the needle on many of the aspects of the cultural plan. So that, I would say, is the area where we want to focus more on, where we want to push the needle more on, and I feel that as my role as a Commissioner, my role as a Commissioner is to facilitate more of those partnerships so that we can fully achieve many of the intentions of the cultural plan.
And what is DCLA's plan for creating those partnerships?
I don't want to give away all of my ideas, just to cut. From running a not-for-profit museum, I just participated in the Grantmakers for the Arts Conference. It was an incredible opportunity to meet with grantmakers from all over the country, and I was able to meet with Dr. Maria Rosario Jackson, who is the NEA Chair, and I was also able to meet with many of the grantmakers throughout the nation to talk about how can we create collaborations with foundations and corporations in order to move the needle forward on many of these objectives. So what that would look like in many ways in terms of how we could make it work, as well as with our corporations, because there are a lot of corporations that are doing business in New York City, we need to look at different initiatives. Could we look at the CASA program, and could those CASA programs be matched? We need to look at programs such as, that I've been looking at very closely, the Theaters of Color Initiative. How can we look at the Theaters of Color Initiative and that approximate 3.7 million and have a corporation or a foundation match that funding each year with what the council puts forward and have it matched by a foundation or a corporation in order to provide more funding? Imagine we move the needle from 3.7 to like $7 million, and we're able to increase the amount of theater organizations from 54 to maybe 70 or 80 and to reach more communities. So it's really critical that we identify those foundations and corporations and that we not see other sectors in the city, such as our corporations, so much as the bad guys or folks that we don't necessarily have relationships with, but we have to understand how resources are coming into New York City and how we can partner to make people more equitable, and understanding that everyone that's here in New York City has a role and a responsibility to contribute to the cultural sector in some way. We can't just allow foundations and corporations and development to happen in New York City without having a very honest and very real commitment to investing into the city of New York.
Thank you, and I do want to continue conversations about these partnerships and how the council can engage on moving the needle. I do want to acknowledge Councilmember Rivera, who has joined us. But with regard to the budget, our office has also heard from many organizations that have suggested asking the new administration to adopt the 1% of the city's budget for culture and the arts. Is this something that Adams' administration is or has also considered?
This was a huge conversation that we were having in the City Council and one that I was so much in the forefront of. In my conversations during the negotiations with Mayor Eric Adams, while we were not able to achieve the 1% in terms of moving the needle in that way, what we did commit to was the largest expense to was the largest expense and capital budget in the city's history. So while we didn't make the 1% mark, we moved the needle in a major way in terms of passing this budget. And with each budget cycle, we hope to get closer and closer to achieving more investment in the city of New York. But it's always going to be a negotiation, it's always going to be looking at the different dynamics throughout the city of New York. But I believe with this last budget, this administration has demonstrated its commitment to seeing a larger, more robust budget throughout the city.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge Councilmember Fadias. And then an additional question that I want to ask in regards to the budget is, you know, we're hearing a lot about pegs coming in the future budgets, and through the conversations happening around the country, as well as within this council, we are expecting a budget shortfall within this next budget. From your perspective, how do you perceive these potential cuts, and how they're going to impact the cultural community and Create NYC and everything that falls under its umbrella?
Every agency throughout the city of New York right now is looking at cost-saving measures in order to make sure that we can preserve the viability of New York City. Our agency is not exempt from that process. We are looking at how to create cost-saving measures that are not going to impact the cultural sector in an adverse or negative way. We want to make sure that we look at this from a very strategic standpoint, in terms of how can we support and keep our organizations as whole as possible, but also instructing them that they should start to also look within their organizations for cost-saving measures. What are things that they can do in order to better prepare for the future? So we haven't come up with a strategy as of yet. We're, in negotiations with OMB, we're flushing out ideas to see how we can protect the sector, while also recognizing that this cost-saving exercise is needed for the viability of New York City moving forward.
Thank you. And I know you will, but please keep us all in the loop on what that's going to look like, you know, myself, the committee, and the entire cultural community of what these potential, what these cuts will look like.
Definitely.
And where they will hit. I know we talked a lot about money, but other than funding, which is always needed, what support would improve DCLA's implementation of the actions and strategies of Create NYC and some of the work that you are doing? For example, does not take money to streamline or rethink the CDF application logistics and requirements, as well as what you have done in terms of bringing that application portal online?
I think the number-one thing that we can do, which we are already doing, is to work very closely, as Commissioner of the Cultural Affairs, with you, Chair of the Cultural Committee, Chiusei. The closer we work together, the more effective we will be able to be in terms of protecting the sector and moving forward. Also, the ability to work collaboratively to create those public-private partnerships will be really key and critical to realizing the goals of the cultural plan, and I'm really looking forward to being able to do that, to expanding that invitation and that desire to work together to the entire committee. Our ability to work together, to identify priorities and needs in the communities that are most underserved, will be the most effective way to do that, because we all have ideas, we all have ways to move the sector forward, and the more collaboratively we can do that, the better we will be.
Thank you so much. And I do want to segue into Create NYC's benchmarks, in terms of tracking progress. And understanding, and again, tracking the progress you're discussing, is the agency using benchmarks to know how you're doing compared to other years? Do you tie to the indicators and numbers in Create NYC to benchmarks internally?
We don't necessarily look at the cultural plan as so much of a facts and figures and numbers and spreadsheets and bar and pie graphs and that sort of thing. There is an element to that, because you do want to have accountability, but it's also more of an intentionality. I'll give you an example. So for our cultural institution groups, for the first time ever in this nation, the cultural institution groups had to put forward a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan for their boards, as well as their staffs. We also put forward a policy that makes it so that, on a very regular basis, they have to come back to us and report on the intentionality and of the goals and objectives of their diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. So for example, the Museum of Natural History has now moved that needle in a very robust way since the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Plan has been implemented. And now their staff has increased, and their board improvement has now 30% people of color part of that aspect of their board process. So each organization, like we mentioned, the Public Theater and others, are expanding their diversity, equity, and inclusion program, and we have benchmarks to check in with them to see how those action plans are being implemented.
Thank you so much. I am going to, I have another committee right over there that I have to vote on really quickly, but we're going to, I'm going to give questions to Eric Dinowitz, Councilmember Dinowitz, and I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz.
Good morning. Thanks for giving Wayfill a shout-out, and thank you for visiting.
Oh, it was wonderful.
It's probably one of the best in the city, I could say that publicly, in the Bronx. And good to see you, Lance. It's always, it's, I'm getting used to this flipped-around thing. So I really love what you're saying about language access, access for people with disabilities, and we spoke about at the last hearing. My first question is about the CUNY Cultural Corps, because I think we all understand how important that program is to diversifying the boards, not just having a plan for the SIGs to do it, but providing that pipeline. And it's an incredible opportunity, I think, you know, again, it's paid opportunities.
That's right.
For students, paid internships. But you testified that there were 500, you placed 500 people since 2017 or 16? I think 16 is what you testified.
2016, yes.
So my question is, over six years, that's about 40 per semester, like 40 students per semester, right? And for such an important program, that has such an impact on the lives of our students, and also, you know, I guess provides for the opportunity for our SIGs to really diversify their workforce and their boards, what efforts are being made to increase the number of slots for the CUNY Cultural Corps?
I am so glad that you asked that question, and with such enthusiasm, and I'll want to get it done kind of attitude, because that's really something that we can work on collaboratively. In the council, you have the ability, in that way, to financially expand.
Money, but no, is that, the question is, is it a matter of funding?
Because they're paid internships.
Yeah.
And so because they're paid internships, sure, we would, you know, for as many thousands of students there are within the CUNY system, we would love to have thousands of young people be a part of that program. But as you know, as in here in the City Council and all across the city of New York, we have moved away from free internships, and so now, because they are a paid program. I would say, when I was in the council, I remember we passed, in our budget, the ability for students, I believe with a B average, to get a scholarship that was founded by former councilmember and speaker Peter Vallone. We were able to take that as a foundation to pass a scholarship program. I believe students would get a partial scholarship to attend CUNY if they have a B-plus average.
But I guess there is funding for the arts, and when you get down to it, the administration decides where the funding goes. So are there efforts to shift the balance more towards programs like CUNY Cultural Corps, and the, I forget what's called, the Leadership Accelerator?
Yep.
To provide those, again, opportunities for students to get paid, essentially jobs?
Right.
But also to provide that pipeline, so that we have a more diverse workforce and more diverse boards? Is the administration able to shift funds to those programs to increase the number of slots at CUNY? Regardless of what we fund in the council, right?
We could do it collaboratively. I would say that's going to be the most effective way, is for us to, the council and the administration, sit with CUNY, and to figure out how we can expand this program, utilizing funding from both branches of government, as well as resources that CUNY may have in order to be able to expand the program, and also to reach out to the private sector to see what we could do to expand this program, and also the partnering organizations, in terms of their ability to match some level of the internship program in that way. So there are many different ways that we could look at it, but it certainly would be a collaborative approach. But it is the most effective way, as we spoke about, in order to create the diversity that we have written about in the cultural plan, in ways that we want to see that move forward.
All right. Well, you have my commitment to work with you on that.
I look forward to it.
Because it's such, I think we all recognize how important that program is. My second question is about DEI. I'm just going to kind of spit it out as quickly as possible. You know, the DEI doesn't just include diversifying the workforce, diversifying the boards, but I think the training that employees get, I wasn't sure if that was, it wasn't clear to me that that was part of the program, the DEI training. But I think since 2017, we've seen a significant uptick in anti-Asian violence, anti-Asian rhetoric. And I think anyone who's watched, owns a screen, has seen the uptick in anti-Jewish rhetoric, particularly from a music artist who's in the culture. And so does your agency, one, for DEI trainings, should they exist? Is that a continually evolving process? To be proactive, but also to be responsive to the changing nature of what's going on with diversity and violence and hate? And are you incentivizing or working with the cultural institutions to sort of address the, you know, the issues that we're seeing, again, you know, with everyone, of course, but particularly when we're seeing upticks in anti-Asian and anti-Jewish sentiment? Are there any efforts being made or work being done to sort of expand like the Jewish and Asian cultures, so that we're, I guess, getting to know each other, learn about each other's cultures, and address those issues through an artistic and educational lens?
I really thank you for that question. It's something that I think about quite often, and I'm also going to turn it over to Shirley Levy to also address this question. And I want to get a clarity question from you, in terms of, is your question focused on, do the organizations that the Department of Cultural Affairs fund, do they have a mandate or a policy that we're asking organizations to implement, in terms of, how do your organizations address issues of hate? How do our organizations utilize curriculum, or school tours, or things to address issues around anti-violence amongst specific ethnic groups? Or is your question focused on, or can you better clarify the question in terms of the staff?
It's both, right? Our staff being trained, and then, and is that constantly being, evolving as, you know, things in, going on in the world change? And also, are you working with them, are they addressing those issues in terms of their programming, and as you mentioned, curriculum, school trips? So it's both the staff and the actual work that is being done. And then, you know, you mentioned in your testimony, things like violence, right, and gun violence, these are, they're all connected, and so it is both.
I would say that specific organizations are doing work as it makes sense, given their mission statement. So organizations, for example, like the Jewish Children's Museum, have been a longstanding partner in working with clergy, working with the police department, working with our schools in order to be a center for the discussion of the elimination of hatred towards the Jewish community, or addressing situations where hate comes forward in that way. But I also want to bring our attention to Shirley Levy, who is one of the founding members of our PAIR Artist in Residency Program. And there was an incredible program that was done out of that, and Shirley can talk about it, that also addresses how this city responded to the hatred that was happening and reflected upon our Asian community, and what the arts community and our agencies did. But there are many programs through the PAIR Program that have also addressed that.
Thank you. So first, I guess I don't have to say this, but I will for the benefit of everyone, that the best way to address issues of hate and violence is to engage with culture. And I think we have the most dynamic, most exciting cultural sector in this country. And so every organization that we support participates in that understanding and sort of collective healing. So everything that we do at Cultural Affairs in support of those organizations is a step in that direction. More specifically, though, about training, as part of the cultural plan, and something that we continue to support, we know that the cultural institutions groups were required to develop their own DEI plans. And as part of those plans, many of the CIGs did provide anti-bias training and other kinds of trainings to their staff during the development of those plans. We also know that specifically during the time of the pandemic, a lot of organizations came together, or the staffs within organizations came together to develop affinity groups or support groups, to talk about a lot of the, you know, feelings that they were, or, you know, experiences that they were having, and how to, again, collectively heal and talk about those and address them through an organizational structure. So all of that is happening, and all of that we continue to support. With respect to the specific program that the Commissioner mentioned, something very close to my heart, the Public Artist in Residence Program, which we continue to offer every year, including this year, we're about to announce our partners this year. During COVID, we had an incredible artist, Amanda Ping Potibakia, work with the Commission on Human Rights, and through her work with the agency, created an incredible campaign called "I Still Believe in New York City," or "I Still Believe in the City." And I hope that you've seen some of her work, which started as a, you know, a subway installation at the Barclays Arena. Thank you. Then grew to billboards on the outside of Barclays, and the Long Island Transit Station, then moved to Times Square, then to all the DOT kiosks. Incredible images actually merging both statements around anti-Asian hate, as well as Black Lives Matter, which became kind of a rallying cry that not only started to appear here in New York City, but then that message she was able to carry actually to a global platform. So something that originated here in New York, addressing very real challenges here within and during COVID, has become a visual symbol that now people are seeing across the world.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your question. But I look forward to further dialogue and conversation around this, because our cultural community is empowered and has the unique placement to address so many of the issues that we are facing, from the Black Lives Matter movement, to the sentiments around hatred of our Asian and Jewish community, and so many others that continue to evolve throughout the city, particularly heightened by the pandemic. So we look forward to continuing those conversations and finding real long-term strategies, and how to utilize our institutions as that vehicle to bring people together in safe spaces, and utilizing the medium of the arts to have that level of understanding and exchange and dialogue that essentially eliminates hate, which is based so much in ignorance of the other.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dinowitz. Councilmember Rivera?
How is it? Okay. Well, hello there.
Hello there.
So nice to see you.
You as well.
Wonderful panel of people. And thank you for bringing up arts and culture as a part of public and community safety strategy. I think that's really, really important, and something I know that my office and this council is doing. And of course, I've always said, and I know you agree, it's so important to our holistic well-being, especially when we look at a just recovery. So with that, you know, open culture, you were a great advocate for it. I know you mentioned in your testimony, and it was something where we, you know, allowed our arts and culture institutions to sort of spill out into the street and repurpose these spaces, and bring us some of the best live music and performances that we desperately needed. So I'll just ask you a few quick questions about the bill. You said you're glad that we are hearing the bill today. Is the administration in support?
Well, let me just first say this. I am so excited that you have reintroduced this, and there were so many different bills, legislation, funding priorities that we put forward in the last council, that we were like, I hope the next council takes these on. So it's really an honor, and I'm so excited that you are excited about the Open Culture Program. This was something that I championed at the height of the pandemic, because we wanted to bring art and culture to every corner of New York City, in every neighborhood, so that people could enjoy art in their own backyard, wherever they are in their neighborhood, to be able to experience it. So this is something that the administration supports as well, in terms of the idea that every community should be able to experience art outdoors, in their home, in their community. And we certainly want to work with you, and we want to work with the council, to realize the vision of having art in all of our communities, and for it to be accessible, and for organizations to recognize that they have to bring art and culture outside. to recognize that they have to bring art and culture outside of their beautiful, state-of-the-art, spacious spaces. We've got to bring it in both places. It's got to be indoors, it's got to be outdoors, and it's got to be everywhere throughout the city. So we are excited, we look forward to working with you, and we are looking to experience art and culture with you in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree. I found when we opened our streets to people, we learned they could be our stages, community centers, they turned out to be our restaurants, our playgrounds, classrooms. And so I know we've learned a lot of lessons since then in trying to create a permanent version of this, and I'm excited to work with your office on it. Under the temporary legislation, arts and culture institutions, entertainment venues, they could apply for an open culture permit from the Street Activity Permit Office for just $20 to host an event at one of the 200 locations citywide. So does the administration have data that estimates how many New Yorkers have participated in the Open Culture Program to date? Is that quantifiable?
We're going to call someone forward who's going to be able to answer that question more specifically.
I'm John Tolson. I'm the Executive Director of Citywide Events in Sapo. And yes, we do have that information. There were 136 applications that came through, applicants that apply, that applied for the program. Of that, we had 325 actual applications, 251 were actually processed. So we, and that translated into about 489 events.
Okay. Wonderful. What were some of the greatest challenges that the administration encountered when operating the program while it was temporary? And what improvements or changes do you recommend?
Okay. So, well, it's always a resource situation. Obviously, the, the deadline for the application was 14, 15 days, and we had only five days. So the concern was that the community itself didn't get a chance to comment on what was happening within their community. And so that was the hardest challenge to, because usually and normally, we have a longer period of time in order for the surrounding communities and the individuals that live on those blocks to comment on the activity that's happening and engage with it. And so that basically, from our standpoint, was, was a larger challenge because we, that window did not exist.
And I know I've spoken with a lot of the organizations in my district. I have this fabulous coalition as well called Fourth Arts Block, and they certainly want to see themselves as a steward, a way that'll be helpful to your organization in whatever capacity that's appropriate. So will we sort of support, well, will we notify community boards of the program and designated streets in their district? How do you foresee that process going forward?
I, I do want to comment and make the comment that even though the program has sunsetted, and it did sunset, that we have been able to accommodate these types of cultural requests. DOT has an open streets program, which would actually allow potentially more events and activities to take place than what did under the Open Culture Program. We also have our civic events application, for which people can apply for any street in any location, they're not restricted, for multiple times. So we do, are actually already fulfilling that need. We've found ways to ensure, and we've actually put this more prominently on our website. It's basically things that we were doing, some of the things that we were doing previously, but kind of were not explained fully or, or made easily accessible. We've made it a lot more accessible for these cultural organizations to do that. We've also encouraged them to partner with entities and institutions that are already within those neighborhoods, because that's key for us to make sure that even as these are happening, that they're, they're a part of the neighborhood and they fit into that community.
Well, thank you. I want to just thank all the advocates who are here, and special shout out to Neon and all the other great partners in the room. And I'm very proud to be, you know, a sponsor of this legislation, along with such a champion in, in the chair, Chair Ossie. Thank you, Commissioner, Council, all of you. Thank you so much. Looking forward to seeing you out there in the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Chair. Very happy to see you, Commissioner.
You as well.
Happy to see you, Lance. I'm going to keep it short, because a lot of the questions that I had were, were asked already, but I'll go in another direction. I wanted to know how many groups were funded under the Cultural Development Fund and, between FY22 and FY23? If you guys have those numbers.
We're going to actually announce, I don't want to ruin our exciting press release and press conference that we're going to put out, but the, the CDF organizations, I would, I, without giving away the tagline, I'll say it's over 1,000. We had more people apply than ever before in our city's history. And so our goal in many ways was to, to fund as many, okay.
It's going to be released soon.
It's going to be released soon.
All right.
So it's coming soon. It's coming soon.
I wanted to see what those numbers look like, but we'll see it. And I'm pretty sure it will be an astronomical amount compared to what we've received in years past. I also wanted to ask, has DCLA thought about how Create NYC programs will support new New Yorkers seeking to get acclimated in how we do culture in New York City?
That's a phenomenal question, because as we all know, that that's a very real issue for New York City right now, especially with our asylum seekers and many people that are coming to New York City for the first time. I'll actually turn it over to Shirley to talk a bit about the cultural plan and how it related to our immigrant communities all across New York City that are new to New York City and how they navigate. Of course, our language access program is the most obvious go-to, as well as the Cultural Immigration Fund that the City Council is supportive of. But I'll turn it over to Shirley for a little bit more in-depth there.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was also going to mention the Cultural Immigrant Initiative on the council side is critical to that objective. I would also add that IDNYC, which is a major administration, was a major administration priority in the past admin, but one that we continue to support, is essential to this effort because, as, as we know, IDNYC is open to anyone regardless of their immigration status. And we have a very strong partnership with, between IDNYC and the cultural sector to offer membership benefits or other, you know, cultural benefits that anyone who comes to New York City can also feel like they belong at and that the cultural institutions belong to them. And so that's something that we, we care deeply about and something that, you know, again, upholds the, the tenants of the cultural plan. And then I guess I just want to also say that a lot of our cultural institutions do this work already, and what we do through CDF by funding these organizations is to support programs that support immigrant populations and communities, including new New Yorkers. So for example, if you take Little Amal at the St. Anne's Warehouse, right? It was a huge organizational push for this organization, but also was a huge collaboration with the city and not just Cultural Affairs, but with a lot of other agencies, including yours, that had to get behind this effort. And so, you know, our, I think our goal, and we do this, we do this specific job well when we support the organizations to do the work that they do.
Thank you for that. And I think the issue is, and I'll speak specifically about my district, if we ask IDNYC to be deployed over to the shelters in our district, they sign them up, but they don't really go over what benefits and resources comes with the IDNYC card. So I think that's something that we could all work on together, but I'll speak specifically to my district and, and my analysis and what I've seen that hasn't really been shared.
No, I appreciate that suggestion. That's an incredible idea, and we'll certainly take it back to the agency and see how we can work collaboratively with you to help make that happen.
This is my last question, because I see the chair looking my way. Okay. Okay. I would be remiss if I didn't ask this question. I wanted to know, does Create NYC Language Access include French Creole, French Haitian Creole? So I see you've got 36 nonprofits, I see that there's 12 languages, but I wanted to know if French slash Haitian Creole is one of those languages that was implemented in this particular program? And if these 36 nonprofits actually service folks that speak those languages?
We would have to get back to you with, on that, we really do look to the organizations to propose their own programs that then we support. I'm assuming that many organizations do support French Creole, but we can get you the specifics.
So while there's been an influx of migrants coming in from Texas, I know a large portion came in the latter part of 2021 from Texas that were of Haitian descent that we don't talk about in the press and the media. But I know some of those folks are here in New York City. So hopefully we get that information. Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
We will definitely let you know which organizations and which institutions have utilized their language access funding in order to be able to provide French Creole-speaking programming, and hopefully much of it is happening in your district as well. So we will let you know.
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues for asking those questions. I think they were very amazing questions. I'm not surprised, but I do have two follow-ups based off of both Councilmember Lewis's question and Councilmember Dinowitz's questions. But I know that you don't want to spoil the press release yet of those that have, you know, will receive funds from the CDF. But would you internally show us the, the folks that will be receiving funds from CDF, at least on the council side? We won't launch the information without your press release, but I think we definitely would love to take a look at, at some of the work that you guys have done in terms of, of the CDF grantees.
I will, as this is, as this is my first time being a Commissioner and your first time being Chair of the Council, we'll have to figure out if that is the most appropriate way for us to deliver that information. I want to be as transparent and as forthcoming as possible, but want to make sure that, I suspect that all of the council members have access to understanding which organizations have been funded or awarded funding or not. We'll figure out how to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. And then a follow-up from Councilmember Dinowitz's question is, does DCLA have, have any benchmarks for, for meeting Create NYC goals, at least internal benchmarks? For example, how many CUNY students should be placed and paid cultural internships? What are the numbers the agency is shooting for in meeting these goals? What is your target for each indicator? What are you willing to be held accountable for?
I would say that our budget is the greatest reflection of the goals and mission of the Create NYC Cultural Plan. I would say that if we look at our budget and we look at how we're spending money, that's really a huge indicator. But we're going to continue to do the check-ins and to continue to review how the program is moving, how it is being assessed. I would say like, that one of the greatest indicators that I am particularly proud of is the fact that we've created the policy for the cultural institution groups to be able to provide regular reports in terms of how their diversity, equity, inclusion efforts are being managed and what goals they are achieving. We want to make sure that the CUNY Cultural Core Program, to Councilmember Dinowitz's suggestion and idea, how can we expand that? We're able to do what we can do with the amount of funding that we have at the current time. We, in this budget process, fought aggressively to make sure that the language access and the disability program remained in the budget, despite the fact that this has been a very challenging budget time. We've made sure that those programs have been managed and maintained and that those organizations are getting that funding. But again, one of the huge benchmarks is making sure that resources that were not reaching communities of color, that were not reaching communities that had been underserved, are now being realized. Those communities are now being resourced. Those communities are now seeing institutions, brick and mortar, state-of-the-art, world-class institutions, that reflect their history, their culture, and their contributions to the city of New York. If you look at the People's Theater Project, that's going to open up in the next year or so, that's another example of the power of the immigrant community, being able to put forward their voice and their ability to say, we need to have a seat at this cultural table. And the best way to do that, from being a nomadic organization for years, is to have our own permanent home and the ability to be able to express our ideas from our perspective by us, for us, in our own new cultural home. So I think that looking at the cultural landscape and seeing how diverse it's going to be, I mean, when I was a council member and, or even prior to that, running Mokata, the idea that there could even be a hip-hop museum was something unfathomable, that something like hip-hop was an underground cultural art form that would never rise to the occasion of being in a pristine, world-class, state-of-the-art museum. But look at where we are right now. This is going to be one of the premier cultural institutions of New York, celebrating a cultural art form that is global. And I think that those are examples of showing the diversity of the cultural plan. And when you look at the Theaters of Color Initiative in terms of organizations that were systemically underfunded are now receiving funding that will be, that will give them an opportunity to exhibit and to show and perform their history and their culture right in your own backyard. I mean, you're in Bedford-Stuyvesant, the fact that people can just walk down the block and go to the Billie Holiday Theater for an incredible program is phenomenal. The fact that in Upper Manhattan, you're able to go to Pregones and, and the Bronx, and you're able to see theater programs that are reflective of your history and your culture, that you can go to East Harlem and see Caribbean Cultural Center's brand-new facility in a renovated firehouse. This is really what the dynamics of the cultural plan were really all about.
Absolutely. And, and you know, the only reason I'm pushing on benchmarks and, and key indicators-
As you should.
-of tracking, you know, the progress of, you know, where taxpayer dollars is going. And I, I do acknowledge, you know, that, the, the fact that we have a hip-hop museum that's going to be opening up, or more money going to our cultural institutions and organizations within the Bronx are great indicators. But in terms of some of the programs that are funded through Create NYC, whether it's through CUNY, whether it's the Language Access Fund, we need to actually, you know, track the progression of how well those programs are doing. And, you know, Mayor Eric Adams talks about the city as being, you know, a corporation, and within corporations, we have key performance indicators that allow us to track, you know, how successful a program is doing. And I think the benchmarks, or at least internal, half-public, half-private, you know, benchmarks and goals of how well these programs are doing, would help us in the council and in the cultural community continue to advocate for more money on seeing those programs expanded or not. So just a recommendation, I think it would be definitely something that'd be helpful to all of us in terms of expanding some of the great work that you're doing.
I appreciate that very much, and I think Mayor Adams would be thrilled to know that you were quoting his philosophies on the operations of the city of New York in such a positive manner. I think that what you stated is really critical. I think that when we look at the benchmarks, we have to look at where money is going in terms of what boroughs and what neighborhoods, and we should provide that information to you in terms of where the money is going on the capital and expense side, so that we can see where dollars are being allocated, in terms of funding for the CUNY Cultural Core Program, the ability to be able to say how many interns are happening every year, where they're coming from, and, and what programs they are going off to. So there are certainly more ways that we can go forward with the way of documenting, such as Councilmember Lewis's suggestion in terms of, I want to know where and what organizations have Haitian Creole, French-speaking applications within their cultural institutions so that her community could benefit? How are we utilizing the IDNYC program? So the suggestions that you're putting forward in terms of how you want to see that information is helpful to us as an agency, and we're certainly going to take that back in terms of finding and providing more ways to quantify the success of the program that we know is happening. But as you stated, you want to see it more in benchmark formats. Some of that is going to be in that format, but also, as I always say, everything that counts can't be counted. It's, you know, the, the ability to inspire a young person from going on a school trip or going to an after-school program, the ability to understand how people are going out into the world after the CUNY Cultural Core. Some of that can't be documented in that way, or if someone has a really great experience in terms of being able to navigate a cultural institution because it was in Spanish or it was in French Creole, we can't always document how that experience impacted that person's life and what they went on to do as a result of feeling so welcomed in that space. But we can provide the type of information in terms of how many students are being served through CUNY Cultural Core, where is our capital and expense dollars going throughout the city of New York? And for what we can document, we will provide.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. During the launch of Create NYC, former Mayor Bill de Blasio announced an $18.5 million allocation for initiatives or funding for the art and cultural sector. How much of this allocation was used towards the goals outlined in Create NYC?
Give me a moment on that.
Okay.
We'll have to get back to you on that specific question. I was trying to avoid that because I hated that when I was a council member. But we will certainly get back to you on that number and provide the specific information that you requested.
And, and just to, you can take note of this when, when getting back to us, but follow-up questions were, has the entirety of this funding been spent? And as well as, if not, where is the rest of the funding? And just to, you can take note of this when getting back to us, but follow-up questions were, has the entirety of this funding been spent? And as well as if not, where is the rest of the funding being allocated to?
Got it. Thank you so much, Councilmember.
According to the cultural community, they are unaware that this plan is still in effect. What outreach has DCLA done to the cultural community on the Create NYC plan? And are there conversations with the cultural community to check in about the progress of the Create NYC plan? And if revisions will be needed in 2027?
I would say proudly that I'm quite thrilled that, as Commissioner, I came in at a time, unlike my predecessor, Commissioner Gonzalo Casals, he was not able to get out into the community in the same way that I was because we were on lockdown. But I've essentially done a five-borough tour throughout New York City, where I've had an opportunity to go to each of the five boroughs, to meet with members of the community, to talk about the cultural plan, but also our capital and expense investments in their particular community, and celebrating those financial wins that we were able to have and those budget wins in every borough. That's one. I was also really very proud that I was able to go to, just recently, in Upper Manhattan to celebrate with LMCC the powerful work of our arts community and our arts councils. So our arts councils are, as part of the cultural plan, a huge part of how we've provided increased funding to our arts councils, such as LMCC and our Borough Arts Councils, to provide more funding for those organizations so that they can provide additional support to our artists' community. And that was a critical part of this particular plan. We wanted to make sure that funding got directly to the artists, and the way to do that was through our local arts councils. But I would say, I've had meetings with many of our communities in terms of, I've met with many of our Asian Alliance organizations, with our Latino-based organizations, African-American organizations, the LGBTQ, had a very extensive meeting with the disability community. So there are lots of communities that I've had an opportunity to have roundtable, sit-down, personal visits, so that I can understand the culture as well as the community throughout New York City, and understanding what are the needs, the wants, the challenges, and to also continue the conversations that the cultural plan began.
Absolutely. And yeah, it would be great to, I know that there's so many cultural organizations and institutions that exist in New York City, and as you know, Culture at Three is a great resource for many of our-
Incredible.
... cultural institutions and organizations. And, you know, we've heard through that channel about, I guess, not the lack of outreach, but, you know, organizations still not knowing about Create NYC. So anything that you guys are already doing, if you could, you know, work with as many of your cultural partners and our cultural community partners as possible in getting the word out, that'd be great, because this is, you know, a wonderful program that I think everyone should utilize.
Definitely will do that.
Thank you. From now until 2027, what are some concrete action items DCLA is taking to meet the goals outlined in 2017 Create NYC and 2019 Action Plan?
At this point, what we're really focused on now is the funding. And we're going to continue to focus on providing the funding that we have through our agency, but most importantly, we want to make sure that we have the private as well as the public partnerships that we spoke about. So again, our continued partnership, as well as finding the resources to implement so many of the aspects of the cultural plan.
Wonderful. And I have one last question before we move on to public testimony. Can we get a firm commitment from DCLA that all the goals outlined in the plans will be met by 2027?
The cultural plan is an ever-evolving document, so I don't want to, at 2027, say, "We've achieved diversity," because diversity is an ongoing goal. It's an ongoing aspiration. It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing aspiration that we all have to work every single day to achieve, and the moment that you think you've achieved it, you haven't. It's really important that we recognize that New York City is an ever-evolving city and that we're going to be constantly doing the work to provide more equitable funding, to making sure that our boards and staff are reflective of the City of New York, to make sure that our exhibitions, performances, programs, film, media are reflective of the people of the City of New York. And that's an ongoing issue, as well as making sure that resources and dollars reach every corner of New York City. We'll never be a "done, we did it," onto the next set of business. This is going to be an ever-evolving goal that is never going to end. Once the cultural plan in 2027 is completed in that time-year frame, that plan will evolve in order to achieve higher levels of evolution and diversity and equity and inclusion. How people define themselves and how people see themselves in this city is going to continue to evolve and change. And the terminologies, the languages that we use to describe ourselves is also going to evolve. So we're going to make sure that we continue to work hand-in-hand to make sure that these goals are, that we are committed that these are lifetime goals for the City of New York.
And while I do agree with that, do you think that there are some goals that are not ever-changing, that are more concrete? For example, you know, some goals could get to, I guess, that you have, could be completed by 2027, and then there could potentially be a new plan created to achieve, I guess, whatever has changed in our society for us to strive towards? Does that make sense?
I would say like if we set a goal to say that we want to have 1,000 CUNY Cultural Core students by the end of 2027, if we made an arbitrary goal like that, sure, we could make goals like that to say that we want to have this many students impacted by the program. We could make goals in terms of saying we want so many, so much funding by percentage to go to so many different boroughs by X, Y, and Z date. We could do that, but at the same time, we recognize that those benchmarks will continue to evolve and change, because we're always going to want more, and we're always going to require more funding and more resources in order to achieve our goals. But I would certainly say that partnership, again, is really the key to achieving what we want to see in this world, and really documenting and providing information for this council, as well as the sector in the field, on the successes that we've made and the ways that we have pushed forward the arts and cultural sector.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Honored to testify before you today. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much, the administration. This concludes the administration portion of the hearing. We'll now move to public testimony. We will be starting with in-person panels first, so I will read the names on the first panel, if those individuals can come to the dais. We'll just take a couple minutes to transition. The first panel will be, and apologies for any pronunciation, Katrina Perloo, Damian Merrick, Lyndon Sylvester, and Andre Whitehead. Thank you again to the Commissioner and DCLA, and thank you to everyone here.
So we'll just move in order. So again, starting with testimony from Katrina Perloo. And as the Chair said at the beginning of the hearing, there's a two-minute clock. The clock is on the wall if you're in the room. And you can submit written testimony afterwards. If you didn't bring written copies or want to change it, you can email it to testimony@council.nyc.gov, up to 72 hours after the hearing. So the first witness is Katrina Perloo. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Ose and members of the committee. My name is Katrina Prelo. I am the Director of the New York City Neighborhood Opportunity Network, otherwise known as NEON. I'm here today to speak about the impact that access to the arts and culture has on underserved neighborhoods and its effectiveness as a vehicle of transformation, particularly for justice-involved people. I also want to briefly highlight some of the NEON's arts and culture opportunities, including Freeverse, the Made in New York Animation Project, NEON Photography, and NEON Arts. The NEON comprises a network of resource hubs strategically located in seven New York City neighborhoods that have disproportionately impacted by the justice system: Bedford-Stuyvesant, East New York, Brownsville, Jamaica, Harlem, the South Bronx, and Northern Staten Island. These neighborhoods are home to large numbers of people on probation, the majority of whom are people of color. Through this nationally-recognized model, New York City probation provides resources, programming, and opportunities in partnership with community residents and organizations. Freeverse is a poetry workshop offered in the NEON that turns wait time into creative time by inviting community members, professional writers, and DOP staff to read, write, sing, and perform during a weekly open mic. The Made in New York Animation Project provides youth across the city with the opportunity to learn professional-grade animation software, practice technical 3D animation techniques, and qualify for paid internships in this field. And our Neighborhood Opportunity Network Photography Program also provides professional training in the history of photography, technical skills, and the art of visual storytelling resulted in paid opportunities. Let's see, I have three seconds left. So...
You can continue.
Thank you. Each NEON has a stakeholder group of individuals from local businesses, community and faith-based organizations, residents, and community leaders that decide what services are needed. In fact, we would love to have you and your staff connect to our Bed-Stuy NEON Stakeholder Group, Chair Ose. Part of what makes our NEON Arts model, our public-private partnership with Carnegie Hall so innovative, is that the NEON stakeholder groups select the art and cultural programming for their NEON, but with a much less onerous application process than other arts-funding opportunities. This allows hyper-local culturally competent arts organizations to have access to programming opportunities they are often excluded from due to their smaller capacity. We've already awarded over $3 million in grants to date. The majority go into artists and organizations with annual operating budgets of less than $250,000. Thank you to the City Council for supporting this program as a part of the Speaker's Innovation and Criminal Justice Initiative, especially to Criminal Justice Committee Chair Carlina Rivera, the former Chair Keith Powers, as well as to Councilmembers Stevens and Hanks for your district support allowing for the increased arts opportunities in the South Bronx and Northern Staten Island, respectively. This year, the NEON Arts finale is on Friday, November 18th, at Carnegie Hall, and we would be honored if you could join us. I also want to thank Chair Ose and the DCLA Commissioner Combo for championing the impact that arts and culture has had on crime reduction. As you know, the social impact of the arts studies showed that arts and access and cultural opportunities in underserved neighborhoods of New York City, using a network approach, these are their words and not mine, had an 18% decrease in serious crime rate. This proves that art and criminal justice are connected, and that holistic community corrections and arts equity strategies must include increased access in the arts for justice-involved people and their communities. Thank you again, Chair Ose, and members of this community for the opportunity to testify about the important and innovative arts and cultural programs offered through the NEON and their role within New York City's cultural landscape. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next person on the panel will be Damian Merrick. So there's a two-minute clock, and just, we have a bunch of panels if you guys... All right, thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Damian Merrick. I'm the Director for the Next Steps Mentoring Program for Average Youth in Boulevard Houses. I'm also the Co-Chair for NEON Arts in East New York. The NEON program has done wonders for the residents of this community. Let's start by saying, NEON Arts has provided the youth the power to select which programs come into their community via voting process. Those programs selected have allowed the youth to obtain tangible skills that they can utilize through the course of their life, in addition to giving them a sense of pride in their community. The participants of NEON Arts have done amazing things. For example, beautified defaced churches, community centers, and schools, developed personal skills to bring their trauma to life with programs such as pocket flicks, flex dancing, and changing perceptions, as well as learning to monetize their skills by editing videos, airbrushing, and painting. As I stand before you, I can share all NEON Arts have done for our residents. NEON Arts has allowed the participants to have weight lifted off them mentally by telling their stories in these artistic forms. Allowed participants bragging rights by pointing out things in their community and saying, "I helped beautify that safe space over there." Some participants have come back and discussed how they helped their parents paint the house when prior to the family never found time to barn. Through NEON Arts, the East New York community was able to obtain two coach buses to transport them to see The Lion King live on Broadway. As an added surprise and experience, after the show, everyone was given the opportunity to meet the all-black cast who shared their experiences with obtaining their role and how they never gave up on their dreams when not cast the first time. The cast was also open to answering questions asked. Carnegie Hall, along with NEON Arts, has given the East New York community a space to showcase their talents throughout the City of New York with big events inside their famed building.
You can continue.
I can continue, I only have one more part. The amount of joy NEON brings to the East New York community is unmatched by any other organization in the area. I could go on and on about the East New York partnership with NEON, but as you can see, I only have two minutes. Thank you all, and have a great day, and thanks to NEON Arts.
Thank you so much. The next person on the panel is Lyndon Sylvester. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Lyndon Sylvester, and I am the Program Outreach and Administrative Support Specialist for the Animation Project. We are grateful to our primary partners at the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment and the Neighborhood Opportunity Network, which together formed the Made in New York Animation Project. The Made in New York Animation Project is a nonprofit art therapy, education, and workforce development program that teaches digital animation skills and provides a career pathway to the animation industry for young people at the NEON locations throughout the five boroughs and participating schools in the NEON neighborhoods. We have various levels of programming, as well as training program for the participants to learn more about the technical aspects of animation. We work with young adults in all five boroughs, ages 15 through 24, reaching over 1,500 young people per year. Our Summer 2022 programming was hugely impactful. Here's a quote from one of the participants. "I had an amazing experience. If I could restart and do this all over again, I 100% would. I learned so much about self-care and how to take better care of myself and start putting myself first more often. I have also been able to relate so much to my peers around me, which have made me feel a lot better about some of my bad habits, knowing that I'm not the only one struggling and trying to get better and be the best version of myself." The Made in New York Animation Project also provides a safe space for young adults to come and share their stories without being judged. During COVID-19, the programming was only offered virtually, but recently began in-person groups again. One previous participant from the South Bronx NEON, Mauricio, returned... A little. Okay. Returned and shared how grateful he was to have the Made in New York Animation Project back in his community. He said that he didn't have a space where he could come and share his creative ideas and how much he values his partnership, this partnership for providing that space. Mauricio is a dedicated attendee for both our South Bronx and Harlem NEON group every week. My journey at TAB began through my local NEON. I excelled through the program, and when the Made in New York Animation Project partnership was formed, I was hired by TAB to be their full-time recruiter and eventually promoted to a specialist. From designing and implementing new outreach strategies to recruiting youth across all five boroughs, to testifying at city council hearings, I now have my dream job, and it all began thanks to having access to art and design opportunity in my neighborhood. Thank you for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And now we'll move to the final witness on this panel, Andre Whitehead. You may begin your testimony when ready. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Good morning, Chair Ose, and members of the Cultural Affairs Libraries and International Intergroup Relations Committee. My name is Andre Whitehead, and I am the Assistant Director of the Neon Photography Program. I am here today to briefly share with you my story and how Neon Photography Program and having access to artistic career opportunities have completely changed my life. Neon Photography provides professional photography training, workshops designed to teach participants the elements and history of photography, a range of technical skills, the art of visual storytelling. This paid arts and career opportunity is available in the Neighborhood Opportunity Network, also known as Neon Neighborhoods, Bed-Stuy, Brownsville, East New York, South Bronx, Harlem, Jamaica, and Northern Staten Island, as well as online. I was fortunate enough to be one of the first Neon Photography participants back in 2018, when the program launched for the people on probation and other community members in the Neon Neighborhoods. One of the best nights of my life was the Neon Photography opening reception, where 53 other photographers and myself, who graduated from the workshops, had our work exhibited for a whole month at the Hunter East Harlem Gallery. I will always be honored and thankful that Councilmember Holden was there to celebrate with us and for his efforts championing the Neon Photography Program. Since then, Neon Photography has had their work exhibited at Powerhouse Arena, Denise B. Bro Fine Arts Gallery, Columbia University, and our eighth opening at the Kente Royal Gallery of Harlem, and more. I will be sure to send you more information on our next exhibit and would be honored if you could attend. After graduating from the workshop, I was hired and received training to become a Neon Photography Instructor, where I was able to share this incredible opportunity with other new groups of young people in our community. Is it okay if I continue? Okay. Seeing their faces as we discussed the history of photography and hearing the excitement as they contributed to our conversation reminded me of when I sat where they were just a few months before. I had no words to describe the feeling of bringing this opportunity to our young people from our community and leading a class of my own. The Neon Photography Program, I've not only developed my passion for photography, but I've had numerous paid opportunities and have allowed me to enjoy the world. I've had opportunities like the Design Trust Turnout NYC, New York Fashion Week, IMATTS Expo, book signing with Common, and community events with Charlemagne the God, the NBA Taj Gibson Foundation, a paid photography trip to Morocco. Earlier this year, I was honored to photograph DCLA Commissioner Combo for the Met Gala, including her wedding proposal. I've grown so much and accomplished so much because of this opportunity, which, why, as Assistant Director of the Neon Photography Program, it is my full job to help bring incredible opportunities to the other people, unlimited potential, with unlimited potential throughout the city. Growing up in my neighborhood, I've lost friends to drugs and violence. So earlier this year, at my press conference with Mayor Adams, when I held up my camera and I said, "This camera saved my life," that was real talk. That was real talk. I even tattooed my camera on my arm. You understand? It really changed my life, you understand? Thank you, Chair Ose, and members of this community for this opportunity to testify about the Neon Photography Program and the transformative impact it has had on my life. I'm here to answer anything.
Thank you. I hope you could take a picture of me one day.
Yeah, right now, I have my camera with me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to you four.
You're welcome.
That concludes testimony for this panel. So thank you so much. If you have any follow-up questions or any other testimony, please feel free to reach out and submit it. Thank you so much for your testimony. So I'll now read the next panel. There will be four witnesses. Lisa Gold, Sheila Lewandowski, Lucy Sexton, and Candace Anderson. And just for the record, this is an in-person panel, so we're just transitioning.
Hey, friends.
Okay, so the next witness is Lisa Gold from the Asian American Arts Alliance, and you may begin your testimony when ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ose. My name is Lisa Gold, and I'm the Executive Director of the Asian American Arts Alliance. We are a 39-year-old Brooklyn-based nonprofit service organization that works to ensure greater representation, equity, and opportunities for Asian-American Pacific Islander artists and arts organizations. And we work across all different disciplines. I just wanted to share a few thoughts about the cultural plan because in 2017, my organization was involved with its development. We led a community convening, and we developed our own survey and distributed that to get feedback around the needs of the API community. And then there were a couple of very broad themes that emerged from that process, namely the desire for more inclusive decision-making by DCLA, more inclusive funding from the city, more accessible information, and transparency. And for example, I did not know that the Disability Forward Fund or the Language Access Funds were still available. I would like to have that. I have plenty of constituents who speak other languages that could really benefit from this. So that's obviously still an issue. So, you know, as the leader of an organization that serves a community which has been just underfunded for decades, I would like to see what Councilmember Dinowitz said. I would like to see explicit and measurable goals from the city around the cultural plan. Just, you know, one example. DCLA, they capture audience ethnicity by percent on the CDF application. So just as a starting point, see if they can, you know, share those numbers and ensure that they map to the city's actual demographics. Because right now, Asian-American-led and serving organizations receive about 4% of DCLA Cultural Development Fund grants. There are no... We're 18% of the city population, right? There are no API-led or serving CIGs. So that translates to closer to 2% of funding while we're 18% of the population. So we need to ensure that those funds are distributed equitably and they reach the populations that have been underserved for so long. So that's really all I want to say, is just ensure that there's transparency and equity in that funding. And one more thing, I cannot leave this testimony today without saying something about the role of the City Council in combating racism and hatred in our city. I was very, very pleased to see Councilmember Dinowitz making a comment about the rise in anti-Asian hate and antisemitism. I'm a Korean Jew, so it hits me hard. But I wanted to say, if there's anything that we learned about what happened in LA, we need the City Council to step up against that hatred, and we need you all to make a stand, so thank you.
Thank you. And that's done through culture in terms of how we combat that hate, so thank you.
The next witness will be Sheila Lewandowski. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Sheila Lewandowski, Executive Director of the Chocolate Factory Theater in Long Island City, Queens. I do not have written testimony, I have lots of notes, and so I'll make some comments. The first, right on the tail of what Lisa Gold was talking about, a step further, we're, I think, a numbers in the cultural community asking the City Council to make a statement about the colorist and racist remarks that were made by peers in Los Angeles, so that there's a verbal... You know, we are taking a stand as a city, saying that that was not okay. We are fighting against it through culture. So I have a number of thoughts. I'm going to jump the cultural plan itself to the earlier Chairman Ose. You said, "We need 1% of the city budget to culture." We cannot achieve the goals that were outlined in the 2017 Plan, and even these increased goals, without increased funding. And we should not be taking it from other sources. We need to dedicate our tax dollars. We want to have a safer city. We want to have a more inclusive city. Then we need to put some more funding behind it. I copied down a couple of things that were said. I think we need to stop shoplifting on the cultural community, too, to make sure that artists are paid, cultural workers are paid better. Open Streets does not solve that. Open Culture does not solve that. I think that they're both good programs, but they're very different, too. I do not want to conflate the two. Open Culture needs funding because, you know, we participated in it, but we had to use other money that we couldn't even fundraise for in advance in order to make sure artists were paid. I think there needs to be more community engagement in the Open Culture Plan, more locations. And, you know, and it shouldn't be just a designated street. I think people should be able to apply on a rolling basis to use specific locations. And I do think they should have community... Community boards could be a place where, you know, people come, maybe a few months in advance or a month in advance, to say, "This is something I'd want to do." Because I'm on my community board as well. Can I go into...? Okay, quickly. So, actionable plan for incorporating the city's participation in the genocide and slavery and oppression into city planning. To me, that should be part of the cultural plan, is that we need to recognize the historic oppression of the city, and that can be done through culture. The Monument Project should incorporate... Has been doing some of that. The street renaming should be doing that. That we walk around and still go make a right on the name of a slave owner, to me, is part of continuing to perpetuate not facing that history. And I think that, to heal, we must acknowledge. And we can do that with culture. Interns, we talked about interns. Organizations need funding to manage those interns. So just because a CUNY intern is paid doesn't mean the organization to do an effective and meaningful work can do it. Most small organizations will not participate because they do not have the capacity. And many of these interns would learn more working in a small organization because they get the whole diversity of activities. Community-based DOT, people talk about moving Open Streets to DOT. DOT actually commissions work. Open Streets does not. So I'm coming, again, coming back to needing funding. What is the intention? The intention of Open Culture now? The intention was so that cultural organizations could continue to operate during the pandemic. But what is the intention now? If it really is to help artists, to make, you know, organizations safer, to bring culture out to everyone, then it needs funding. I'm coming back to funding, 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 funding. And I also want to speak to every neighborhood needing permanent locations. The Commissioner said, "Art to be in all of our communities..." Yes, art should be in all of our communities, but everyone should be able to walk to some kind of a cultural organization or cultural activity within a community space. That means we need more permanent spaces, citywide. Not 20-year, you know, giveaways to developers who get permanent increase in their floor plan. We need permanent spaces citywide. I have other things, but I will, you know, go on. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next witness is Lucy Sexton. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Thank you, Councilmember Ose and City Council. My name is Lucy Sexton. I run a citywide coalition of cultural groups, individual artists and culture workers, New Yorkers for Culture and Arts. I'm testifying today in support of the reopening of the Open Culture Permitting Program and to reflect on the city's 10-year cultural plan, Create NYC, at its halfway mark. Open Culture is a program that helped hundreds of independent artists and cultural groups continue programming during the pandemic. Of the many innovations, one of the most important is that it was the first and only permit program that allowed groups to generate income while allowing free access to the non-paying public as well. It allowed my organization, for instance, to hold an open-air fundraiser. So we paid $20 for the venue. We sold donor tickets for $100 online and held a street party with stilt walkers, spoken-word artists, and dance performances for the entire block, paying and not paying. They could all enjoy it. So Open Culture is a groundbreaking win-win for artists and cultural groups, for the public, and for the entire city. I think they did it geniusly, and I think that we should look to that and hold on to it because it was a way for us to accept money without having to pay for a commercial permit, which is much more money. Streets filled with music, dance, and community create safer, happier, healthier neighborhoods. I say all of this to underscore how every needed... Okay, sorry. Oh, I also want to refer you to the City Parks Foundation's Green Arts Live program. We did this last year as well, and it was a model program which provide mini-grants and production support for work done in the parks and plazas. And that link is in the testimony, which I've emailed to everyone. In the words, in terms of Create NYC, in the words of their recently disbanded Citizens Advisory Council, "The cultural plan manifests the city's collective cultural commitments to inclusion, equity, access, accessibility, compassion, and opportunity. We call on the city to recommit to these goals and to provide methods by which that progress is measured." Thank you for calling for that. "Including convening a new citizens committee to measure its progress every other year." I've included the CAC's summary recommendations done last spring in my written testimony. I'll simply say that there will be no equity in cultural funding without a dedicated cultural equity fund. I also call for transparency, as Lisa Gold did, and reporting from the DCLA on the percentage of funding going to BIPOC-led and serving organizations. Disability justice will not be achieved without dedicated funding, not only for disabled artists and cultural groups, but for small cultural spaces desperate for the resources needed to make their programming truly accessible. Finally, I am echoing Lisa's words. I cannot leave this testimony without saying something about the role of City Council in combating racism and hatred in our city. In learning from the racism exposed in the Los Angeles City Council, we want our City Council members to be vigilant and use their voice to speak out in defense and celebration of every community in all of your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I have some questions for you, Lucy. Where do you think DCLA has been most successful in the Create NYC plan? In addition to that, where do you think DCLA can improve with the plan?
First of all, as the Commissioner said, they did increase funding for the Borough Arts Councils and therefore sent more money towards individual artists. City Artist Corps was not intended part of it, but it did create funding for individual artists, which has now gone away. So I would call for that to come back so that we have individual funding for... Sorry, funding for individual artists, as we did in the City Artist Corps. The failure, I think, one of them, or something we were working towards, for sure. So a victory would be that we have increased funding for the, for cultural in the budget consistently. In three of the past four years, the council has voted to increase funding for culture. That is fantastic, and that is a real victory, and it is not baselined, which means that every year, we have to come here and fight for it. We can't count on it, we can't depend on it. So if we want to provide longevity and viability for our cultural organizations and artists, we have to have a commitment to increasing baseline funding. And that baseline funding should be... There should be a dedicated part of that baseline to support smaller BIPOC-led and serving organizations. We also need dedicated support for disability arts and funds to allow those cultural spaces to invest in their accessibility infrastructure. There was a lot of efforts, and a lot of efforts put into the plan by disability justice advocates, There was a lot of efforts, and a lot of efforts put into the plan by disability justice advocates, and that really has taken a backseat and faded. So I would like to see that recommitted. I would say also that, you know, we, as a city, as a culture, over the past several years, have had, you know, a real harsh and intense racial reckoning. And the conversation has changed, much of it for the better, where we have more understanding. So while the City Council, while the City, sorry, the administration, the commissioner consistently referred to the benchmarks that the cultural groups have to come up with in being more diverse and more equitable and more inclusive, it's not the other way. And we know now that being, you know, diversifying the CIG is absolutely critical and necessary. But what will really change things is we, when we change the pipelines of where the funding is going, increase funding pipelines that go towards the artists you had sitting here on the last panel, that are really investing in neighborhoods like East New York and Brownsville, and saying, yes, that's where the cultural funding needs to go so that we have cultural in every, in every community, and we have access to culture in every community. And that's a long-term goal. It's not something that you can say, we, there's no way to have a benchmark about that. Of course there is, right? And, and by what Lisa suggested of just even saying, where did it go this year? You know, is there reporting? Of course, it takes many to report data. So DCLA itself needs to be, have increased capacity and increased funding in order to serve this much wider cultural community. Sorry, that was a long answer to your question.
No, no, no. And when, you know, DCLA does receive, does release the press release of who's, you know, receiving funds from the CDF, we should all look through that together in terms of, you know, we've really been advocating for a diverse pipeline, not just during these past couple of years, but it's definitely been under my guise now for this year. And it would be helpful to work with you all in the cultural community in terms of, you know, reviewing that, that document and reviewing, you know, how this money is allocated across, you know, our city's cultural organizations and continuing to tweak and come up with a plan of what that equity looks like for future budgets.
Yes, and I will say that the, you know, DCLA did introduce a lot of innovations to make their funding streams more equitable. It would be great to see if that had a good impact, to celebrate that impact, and to say, let's rededicate our efforts to that because those moves towards making it easier application, to making more multi-year funding, et cetera, were aimed at doing, accomplishing the goals of the Create NYC, and it'd be great to see if it had some successes.
And I think you may have said this in one of the questions that I asked, or maybe in your testimony. You would find benchmarks or goalposts from DCLA when it comes to Create NYC as something that would be helpful to the cultural community?
A hundred percent. And, and just, you know, what, what is that? That's really creating a system where it has to be looked at, right? Where somebody, whether it's the Citizen Commission, or whether it's by getting some money so that we can get data out of DCLA, but there has to be a method to just look at it and say, are we moving in the right direction? If you don't want to have it to be a specific number, is there a percentage we're working towards? Do we want to grow towards a percentage of funding that reflects actually the cultural makeup of the city? You know, the, there is, that's, that's what we want as a goal, right? So those, we know those numbers.
And I need your clarity on, on one thing, or at least some of your insight with experience. You mentioned the CAC, the Citizen Advisory Committee. What is the role of the CAAC, or the Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission? And what's the difference between the two, especially when it comes to how they have advised on Create NYC and how they would potentially advise on any future changes that Create NYC will undergo? Or if, and if they're helpful? I think that's the main question.
And maybe my answer is most indicative, which is that as someone who should know everything, I do not know what that commission does.
Right.
They do not, they are not public. They do not interact with the community. I know some of the names on it, and I know that they're figurehead names. They're fantastic people. They're wonderful. I have no criticism of that. But yeah, I, if there is more meat on those bones, I would love to know it.
Thank you.
So we'll now move to the last member of this panel, Candace Anderson from Cool Culture. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Candace Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of Cool Culture, and I'm submitting this testimony on behalf of my organization and the 50,000 families that connect with arts and cultural experiences through our programming. With almost 20 years of BIPOC leadership, Cool Culture was founded to address how communities and which communities are able to access cultural resources for their practices. And we work to strengthen family and community well-being. I know that you are making really hard decisions about funding. I also know that you know, as I do, that arts and cultural resources are essential to healing and recovery for the impacts of institutional racism and on the pandemic. I also believe that we all know that culture is necessary to thrive, yet in historically marginalized communities, families and children face the stark reality of underinvestment in arts and culture, while more privileged communities benefit from systemic inequities. In the process of creating the first-ever New York City Create New York Plan, tens of thousands of New Yorkers named cultural equity and inclusion as their top priorities and expressed a desire to access culture within their, in their own neighborhoods. And no wonder, right? Research that focuses on New York City shows that culture is tied to well-being. A Chicago-based study commissioned by the MacArthur Foundation also examined the relationship between arts and neighborhood capacity and community life and found that initiatives that are led by small arts organizations connected to local social networks significantly impact the well-being of communities. But the reality is that the hardships faced by BIPOC communities and families must frequently be met by the many creative responses that are generated from our communities, our cultural practices, our artistic traditions, and the networks, organizations, and institutions that we have created. But these organizations and institutions lack the adequate funding to fully realize solutions to the challenges faced by BIPOC communities. The research support for this is clear, as stated by Hugh Arts and also stated by the Doris Duke Charitable Foundation and the New York Community Trust Commission's report. There's a need for capacity building support for BIPOC organizations that the private sector is often reluctant to provide. At the time of the Create New York, New York, Create NYC Initiative in 2007, the largest 139 cultural groups received 82% of revenue, public and private, while 1,800 with budgets under $1 million received just 6%. In response to the goals of Create New York City, funding allocated to the, to DCLA in the last three budgets has provided increased funding for individual artists and borough organizations. However, the city's antiquated model of funding the arts was established in the 1800s and has perpetuated and reinforced racial inequities. Far more bold action is needed to address the extreme disparities that it has reinforced. And I just want to get to some recommendations off the top. I am, and I'm calling on the city to revisit and radically reimagine the existing antiquated funding model so that DCLA and the administration can play an active role in redressing historic inequities in government funding and to support BIPOC organizations that play essential roles in their communities. The Department of Cultural Affairs and private philanthropy should immediately amass and distribute a fund of $100 million to BIPOC organizations. This funding should also be baselined, as my colleagues have mentioned, for PC arts and, POC arts entities with guaranteed support in the annual budget every year in the same way that CIG is a baseline budget priority. Also, allow applications for multi-year general operating support in addition to program support. This will really support small BIPOC organizations, organizations in the outer boroughs, organizations with under $250,000 in funding for whom complex applications are stretched, and reduce delays in funding release. Similarly, frees up smaller organizations. And then finally, I'm urging you to invest in capacity. So support BIPOC organizations by ensuring that the CUNY Cultural Corp emphasizes placements in BIPOC-led organizations. Historically, cuts to this funding for this important program have resulted in preference given to larger cultural institutions with greater resources. And finally, increase DCLA staffing and funding. Smaller organizations, BIPOC organizations really do need support and capacity building that can only be provided if the organization, if the agency is staffed up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. This concludes this panel. We also have your written testimony and all the details, and we'll review it. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your time, thank you. So we'll now move to the next in-person panel. I'll read the names of all the witnesses on the panel. Panel three will be Robin Chatel from Moving Culture Projects, Kate Madigan from New York Shakespeare Festival and the Public Theater, and Mariana Mott Newworth. If I mispronounced your name, I apologize. If there's anyone else in the room who's here to testify in person, we did not call your name, please submit a witness list to the sergeant at arms. Otherwise, this will be our last in-person panel before we move to Zoom.
And again, for the sake of time, if you could please keep your testimonies to two minutes, it'd be wonderful. We do collect them as written testimonies, but we do have some folks online as well. Thank you.
Okay, so the, the first witness on this panel is Robin Chatel, and you may begin your testimony when ready. There's a clock on the wall. Thank you. Yeah, just look for the red light on the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. I may go over two minutes, I'm sorry. I've worked really hard to keep it under. I'll do my best. Thank you, Chair Ossie and the, and the council. My name is Robin Chatel, and I'm an independent creative producer. I work with artists and arts groups and communities to produce performing arts events in their public spaces. And I'm here to support Intro 590 and ask the council to reestablish and make permanent the Open Culture Program that was established by Local Law 8 of 2021. Open Culture provides access to and engagement with the arts at a level never seen before in this city. Last year, in every borough, on street after street, there have been dance, opera, theater, comedy, circus, and music performances by independent artists, emerging artists, established artists, small arts organizations, and large cultural institutions, and enthusiastic residents coming out to their homes to experience it. Now, I speak from experience. I started a company last year to help performing arts groups and performers navigate the Open Culture Permit process and mount their work in Open Culture Streets. I called it Open Culture Works. Arts funders pivoted to allow indoor performance grants to be used for Open Culture performances. City agencies, the DCLA, MoM, DOT, and even the mayor's office were all behind this movement to reshape our city's streets through the arts, support the livelihoods of performing artists, and gather people together on a local level. I traveled to all five boroughs to work on performances on dozens of Open Culture streets, East Third Street in the East Village of Manhattan, East 140th in the South Bronx, Minthorne Street in Staten Island, Hoyt Street in downtown Brooklyn, Woodside Avenue in Queens, to name a few. The neighborhoods are so many, I can't even mention them. The Open Culture Program, as Lucy mentioned, even led to the development of other outdoor performing arts programs, such as DOT's Open Boulevards, the City Parks Foundation's Green Arts Alive Program, and even City Arts Artist Corps. And I, I worked on, on all of those. And really, the result for me and our, my, my, my company and the people I worked with was, we employed nearly 60 cultural workers. We supported and helped and booked and paid over 400 performing artists, and we touched, I don't know how many lives, thousands across the city. Open Culture is a game changer, and like open streets and open restaurants, it is an economic driver, an in-person activity to improve New Yorkers' health and well-being, a program that makes safer streets. It's not a stopgap. There's no going back. Open Culture is expected, anticipated even. And I really think, after speaking, hearing from the commissioner, that it could be funded, and funding is key, by Create, Create NYC. It hits all its marks. It has leveled the playing field. It is inclusive. It provides access. It celebrates diversity. It supports the city's ever-widening performing arts footprint and its culturally diverse range of talent, again, whether they be emerging artists, new artists, culturally-specific community groups, you know, established groups. And, and more importantly, Open Culture connects people through the magical shared experience of live performing arts. In other words, Open Culture works. Now, is the permit process perfect? No. Could it use more citywide services and support? Yes. Could it use funding? Yes. Does it cause disruptions? Rarely. And is there an opportunity to create a workforce through it that would, that would put people to work? Producers, stage managers, technicians, CUNY Cultural Service students, the Citywide Service Corps students, the Summer Youth Employment Program students? Yes. And all these people could help make this run smoother. Now, I know there's talk about possibly an agency taking, taking it on, like the DOT. I've worked with the DOT. They do have a public program office. I've always felt that Open Culture from the beginning is not just a permit, but it's a program that needs managers and management. And I, I think really, it should be a public-private partnership. I think arts people should be running this program with city agencies. We are, we know, we know how to put on shows, and we know how to do that. So really, please give us theater people the opportunity to improve Open Culture, to work out its kinks, to iron out its creases, and to turn Open Culture 2.0, because I'm confident that we can, into a replicable, replicable, made-in-New York program that other cities would want to emulate. After all, we are the cultural capital of the world. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And just, just a flag, so we have, we might lose the room at 1:00 PM and still have the Zoom testimony, which is why we're also watching the clock. So if, if there are any questions, we do have written testimony. If you have anything else, you can always submit or amend written testimony afterwards, and we meticulously review it up to 72 hours after the hearing. So thank you. The next witness will be Kate Madigan from the New York Shakespeare Festival and the Public Theater.
Good afternoon, Chair and everyone else. I'm here today to provide testimony on the public's work to support the Create NYC objectives and our work over the past fiscal year. The public utilized the groundbreaking Social Impact of the Arts Project study, which underpins the Create NYC plan to create data-driven strategies to increase attendance for the public theater programming by NYC residents who live in boroughs other than Manhattan, particularly in communities of color. This resulted in a significant increase in people of color attending Free Shakespeare in the Park programming and the increase in our mobile unit and public works programming, whose audiences and participants better reflect the demographics of New York City. In 2020, inspired by the worldwide mass protests guided by our BIPOC colleagues and a movement in theater against anti-blackness and racism, and educated by thinkers and activists, the public reexamined its existing DEI plan and published our Cultural Transformation Plan in May 2021, as mentioned by the commissioner. Following a comprehensive audit of our existing diversity, equity, and inclusion practices and building on the existing DEI plan, the work of enacting this racially just operating framework is a massive undertaking with over 40 action items, which has continued to evolve in response to the needs of our community. Throughout '21, 2022, the public engaged in the hiring process for a new role to oversee our cultural transformation plan and anti-racism efforts. The Senior Director of Anti-Racism, Equity, and Belonging will, we project to be staffed by December 2022. Over the course of the, of the last few seasons, the public has experienced significant staff changes on our leadership program. The majority of these changes have elevated women, BIPOC, and LGBTQIA+ individuals, representing a step forward in how the public realizes our work and who is involved in crucial pipelines. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next witness and the final on this panel is Mariana Mott Newworth.
Hello, thank you, Chair Ossie. Is this on? There we go. Thank you, Chair Ossie, and members of the committee. My name is Mariana Mott Newworth. I am a librettist, a creative producer, and co-founder of Opera Practicus, which is an interabled opera company. Today, I am representing the New York Opera Alliance, often referred to as NIOA, which is a consortium of 45 independent opera companies currently operating in New York City. Many are DCLA recipients. We are living proof that opera in this town is way more than just the Met up at Lincoln Center. We are arts workers, community-driven, egalitarian, telling the story of this city right now through the medium of opera. Annually, our alliance employs approximately 2,000 professional singers, musicians, and creatives, artists of color, and artists with disabilities. For over a decade, we have utilized local materials, worked with other small businesses. Opera is a collaborative effort, and it's strengthening our creative economy and heightening the quality of our arts and culture sector. During lockdown, we were at the front line of culture change, making outdoor performances possible, bringing opera to the people in city parks, community gardens, and on our streets. And the people responded. There is value in having opera be part of our everyday New York City life. The Open Culture Program makes performing arts accessible, and I ask you to maintain this program and ever-evolving ways to help us as we do our job as independent opera companies, making opera accessible to all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. So this concludes the in-person panels for this hearing. There are no questions for this panel, so we'll now be moving to Zoom. Thank you again, and again, we'll be reading written testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Our next panel will actually be our final panel for this hearing. We'll check for anyone that we inadvertently missed. But the members of that panel will be Francine, or Fran Garber, Cheryl Warfield from Advance and More Opera, Lisa Elbert from Greenwood Cemetery, Sinobu Najai, apologies for any mispronunciation, and Ariel Herrera. So again, we'll be moving to Zoom, and the next witness will be Francine Garber. Just wait one moment, and we'll transition. Okay, we're ready for the next panel. So Fran Garber, you may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm trying to start my video. Can you allow me to start my video, please?
We might be having a technical issue. Fran, we can hear you if it's possible to give oral testimony.
Certainly. I'm Fran Garber Cohen, president of Regina Opera Company, which offers fully staged operas with full orchestra and English subtitles in Sunset Park, an underserved and low-income community, as well as many free concerts in public accessible spaces in Brooklyn. We provide affordable, professional-level entertainment in accessible venues for people who may not otherwise attend live performances. Our performances bring people of all ages together and are especially important to senior citizens who make up about 65% of our audiences. The need for this cultural enrichment is The need for this cultural enrichment is reflected in the fact that over 4,000 people usually attend our performances each season, and these are live performances. Starting in the spring of 2020, we were able to keep our existing audience and gain new audience members and bring happiness to fellow Brooklynites by performing six 90-minute free concerts in local streets, thanks to the Open Culture Program. I saw a really positive reaction from local businesses in Bay Ridge for our outdoor performances, while those in Sunset Park were a little slower to appreciate our efforts. But they eventually understood why we were performing in the street and not in our beautiful indoor 500-seat theater. We believe that reestablishing the Open Culture Program, allowing the city to issue permits for cultural performances, and reestablishing the Create NYC Program through this legislation would encourage local businesses to be more welcoming to us and help us realize the benefits of cultural events in their areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to the next witness, Cheryl Warfield. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Ossie and council members, for hearing my testimony. I am Cheryl Warfield, founder and director of Advance More Opera, a 20-year-old nonprofit that presents concerts and educational outreach to youth and families in underserved communities in the Bronx and Manhattan. I also sit on the Executive Committee of the New York Opera Alliance, a consortium of mostly Level IV and V opera companies that bring both contemporary and traditional opera directly to the people in all five boroughs, amplifying new and diverse voices in opera, including those of color and with disabilities. I look forward to DCLA's upcoming grant-making announcement in hope of seeing more inclusion for smaller minority-run organizations like More Opera and greater investment in historically under-resourced communities. Today, I stand in solidarity with Mariana Mott Newworth and colleagues from New Yorkers' For Culture and Arts and Culture III, including Lisa Gold, Sheila Lewandowski, and Lucy Sexton, and defer to their testimony on comments on the cultural plan and open culture. I want to thank Councilmember Dinowitz for his remarks this morning about hate speech against Asian and Jewish communities, but would be remiss if I did not mention the recent revelation of blatant racist remarks by Los Angeles council members. All New Yorkers need to denounce hate speech, including members of city council. And yes, arts and culture properly funded can and will help combat and dismantle hate. Again, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next witness will be Lisa Alpert. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
Time starts now.
Hi. Let's see, hello. I'm going to change my greeting from good morning to good afternoon, Chair Ossie. My name is Lisa Alpert. I'm coming to you live for Greenwood Cemetery in Brooklyn. Yes, we are a cemetery. We are 478 acres. We produce arts and cultural programming throughout the year. Chair Ossie, I know you have a personal connection to Greenwood, which you shared with me last year, and we still want to get you here during our Memorial Day concert to sing one of your grandfather songs.
I know, I really want to come soon. I really do.
But I will stop pandering to the chair. But in truth, the legacies of all of those who've gone before us are what inspire us here at Greenwood Cemetery. I have three important and really brief points to make that relate to Create NYC and its goals. One, tons of people come to Greenwood every year. In 2021, we had 450,000 visitors. That's because we're free to the public, open 365 days a year until 7:00 PM every day, seven days a week, always free. Two, I know the committee is interested in developing new and unconventional spaces for city cultural programming. Greenwood definitely checks that box. We are in a part of Brooklyn with tons of culture, but relatively few cultural resources. Our arts and culture programming and our amazing school programming is changing that. Art installations on the grounds, dance performances, and artist and residence programs, concerts in our catacombs, and loads more. So point one, tons of people come here. Point two, we are a huge resource for cultural programming. And point three, Greenwood has not received programmatic support from the council in over 10 years. We really need council support to be able to afford our really big programs that serve the public at no cost, and these include Juneteenth and Dia de los Muertos, which is coming up next week if you'd like to come. It's totally fabulous. I want to end this on a super positive note. We are very excited to partner with this committee and with the council to support arts and culture in New York City, and we thank you for allowing us to testify at your meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next witness, and apologies again, is Sainobu Nijai. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Time starts now.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, Sainobu Nijai is the name. It's okay, people butcher it. Pretty much, I'm here to, my name is Sainobu Nijai, and I'm the director of a Brooklyn-based nonprofit, small nonprofit, the African Peach Arts Coalition, and I pretty much want to testify for the reinstatement of the Open Culture Permit Program for us as a startup, you know, organization and grassroots programming. This one event that we were able to host as a result of having an open culture permit, it allowed us, it catapulted us, in a sense. It was a great marketing and outreach opportunity. And, you know, these are things that, you know, for us small people, it's important to us. So, and we are also an organization that is focused on peer-rating and incentivized programming. So, you know, we do focus on providing access to the public, but we also want to make sure we're taking the funding that we're getting and opportunities to pay the artists, because we are addressing economic equity and issues with underserved artists who, you know, historically are underserved when it comes to work and gigs and getting paid for their craft. So I'm here to just testify for the reinstatement of that Open Culture Program. We were able to have 20 artists, 20 performing artists, last year in Dumbo, and we started that event, and it is now an annual event. We just had it again in downtown Brooklyn. So again, thank you to all parties. I'm not sure, you know, which parties are which, you know, I'm still learning all of that, but thank you to those involved, and I definitely want to, you know, just advocate, advocate, advocate for the reinstatement of that program. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're moving to the final witness, and we will do a check for anyone that we inadvertently missed at the end. So our final witness on this panel and the final witness for public testimony is Ariel Herrera. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Ariel Herrera, and I am the Research and Advocacy Manager for Dance NYC. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. Dance NYC is a service organization for the dance industry in the metropolitan New York City area, and its action-oriented research and advocacy seek to present and advance the interests of the dance sector. Today, I join colleague advocates working across creative disciplines to reiterate the value of open culture. Began as a lifeline for New York City artists and cultural organizations unable to continue with their regular indoor programming due to the COVID-19 pandemic, open culture brought arts, music, and dance from indoors and out into the streets. Open Culture has become a popular form of community engagement that has had a profound impact on the way that communities think about the importance of arts and culture in their lives and neighborhoods. I am here today to ask you to pass INT 0590 2022 to make Open Culture a permanent city program and make the following recommendations to make it more sustainable, as well as equitable for arts workers and accessible to all communities across the city. One, expand available locations and set a minimum number of open culture streets per community district to increase equitable access for communities in outer boroughs. Two, expand eligibility criteria beyond the currently limited cultural venues to include fiscally-sponsored organizations and City Artist Core eligible artists. And last but not least, require annual evaluation and reporting by the city of the program, excuse me, to address what's working, what's not working, and to ensure that community engagement is an integral part of the open culture programming. Moving forward with the Open Culture as a permanent city program is not only a substantial investment in the resilience and long-term recovery of the arts and culture sector, but a forward-looking investment in community building through arts and culture. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. This concludes the public testimony portion of this hearing. We'll just do one final check for anyone that we inadvertently missed, either in the room or on Zoom. Please use the raise hand function if we did miss you. Not seeing anyone on Zoom. There's no one in the room. So this concludes the public testimony portion of this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming to this hearing to talk about culture. It's something that we care about deeply, or I care about deeply, and I appreciate everyone that spent time out of their weekday to come out, both virtually and in person, to testify. As a co-prime sponsor on the Open Culture 2.0 bill, I'm really excited to have this hopefully passed through this council so that we could, you know, really revitalize our cultural community and cultural spaces in New York City as a whole. And thank you to everyone that also bared witness of, you know, critique and the conversation about Create NYC, because we want to make sure that funding is always equal across our five boroughs when it comes to our cultural organizations and institutions. Thank you, Brenda McKinney, for sitting by my side for today's hearing and every hearing. And I have no more colleagues in the room anymore, but without further ado, I will close today's hearing.